At 6:00 PM with we'll call, our city clerk will be on the WebEx and on the phone tonight.
Mayor Bruin.
Here.
Mr. Blades.
Present.
Mr. Solomon, Raze Rotnum.
Present.
Mr. Hayman.
Present.
And Ms. Breeden.
Present.
By present, we have a quorum.
You have an echo coming off your, it might be the computer, Ricka, or Martin, it might be your computer. Somebody's got a, an echo coming.
I'm on the cell, so.
All right, just, just a heads up, we'll, we'll deal with it as we go through the meeting.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda for this evening. Do I have any edits or changes to the approval? Seeing none, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Please vote.
Thank you. Next, if I can ask everyone to please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance. Captain Dampier, if you'd lead us.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in prayer if you could. Lord, thank you for giving us this day. Thank you for this town of Ridgecrest. Lord, thank you for our country and the freedom we enjoy. Lord, I pray for the leadership. Give them your wisdom and your direction during these crucial times. Lord, be with our troops who are in harm's way. Protect them from all evil. Be with our healthcare workers. Protect them as they serve COVID patients, Lord. Be with the city council as we discuss so many issues. Let our decisions be beneficial and growth-oriented for this community, Lord. Bless each one of us who are present here and lead us throughout this meeting. In Jesus' precious name I pray. Amen.
Okay, we have a proclamation right off the bat, so I was gonna save everyone from sitting down. If I can have my fellow council members join me at the podium and the representative from the Ridgecrest Community Garden. Well, good evening. It's our great pleasure to offer a proclamation this evening celebrating the one-year anniversary of the Ridgecrest Community Garden. I'm gonna go ahead and read it through. If you are not aware of the garden or what it's been doing, it's been doing some fantastic things for our community, and I'm, I'm proud to be able to share in the one-year anniversary of everything they've accomplished. Whereas, supporting household, community, and municipal food security with seasonal and culturally appropriate foods and offering economic savings is prominent as you promote self-sustainable living, provide fresh organic produce, and increase conscious nutritional awareness of the community. And whereas, improving mental well-being by reducing stress, providing a source of physical activity, creating a sense of pride and accomplishment, providing cognitive stimulation, providing connection to nature, and a way to spend time outdoors remains a focal point of what you provide to the community. And whereas, encouraging positive community engagement, restoring hope, and improving the health and well-being of the community by providing fresh organic produce, education, and a space for healing and positive social engagement remain a goal of your organization. And whereas, providing environmental benefits including improved air quality, pollinator habitat, and increased biodiversity will continue to benefit our community. And whereas, your outreach to service and provide food resources to the homeless and at-risk families will remain prominent in the work you do. Now therefore, be proclaimed that we, the city council of the City of Ridgecrest, hereby proclaim September 19th, 2021, as the Ridgecrest Community Garden anniversary, and we ask all citizens to join with the Ridgecrest Community Garden in their efforts to help end food insecurities in Ridgecrest, proclaim this sixth day of October, 2021. Congratulations on your anniversary. Would you like to say a few words? Absolutely.
We recently just approached our one-year anniversary, and being that we are in a global pandemic, we feel very honored to be standing here today. I can remember when we first proposed building the Ridgecrest Community Garden, I was up here, my hands were shaking. I didn't know how, I didn't, I didn't know how to approach building the Ridgecrest Community Garden. But, you know, as a community, this is one of the things that I cherish about the Ridgecrest community that in very tough times, we were all able to pull together, which is something I, I overstate all the time. I don't know if you, you follow our pages or you hear me speak, but I overstate this, that we were able to pull together as a community, pull our resources together, pull together in these very tough times to build a food resource for people who are in need. And we are giving away food every day, pounds of food. We gave away, you know, we just harvested twenty, what, 23 pounds of sweet potatoes today. We are constantly teaching the community how to be sustainable, how to grow their own food, being that if anything were to happen, that we would be a sustainable community where we can all take care of our families and take care of each other. And also wanted to announce that since we had so much success building the Ridgecrest Community Garden, that we are now in the process of building our Herbal Zen Garden, which will sit right next, which will be an extension of the Ridgecrest Community Garden and will sit right next to the Ridgecrest Community Garden. So this will open up more space for healing, more space for, you know, community engagement, more space for us to come together in a positive way. So I want to say thank you all for your support, and I am honored to be standing here today.
Well, thank you, Ridgecrest Community Garden. We look forward to seeing your continued success and hope to see you for many years continue to provide to the community. Next on our agenda would be public comment of items not on the agenda, persons wishing to address the council on matters that are, that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda, may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes and the total time will be limited to one hour. Speakers are asked to please state their name before speaking, and I think that's it. I don't have my little red script sheet, so hopefully I did that from memory. We're gonna take public comment from the floor since the man is on it, and I'll let it go.
Yes, Ron Kucinski, I just have one question about procedure. Do you allow public comment before or after a discussion item? The reason I'm saying that is typically a discussion item, I'm not sure whether the, the, the public would know how to, how to respond to it unless we hear your discussion first. So on any discussion item, I'm hoping that you have your discussion and then you open up for public comment. That's all I have.
It would be discussion, public comment, and then brought back to the council for any final words.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment from the floor?
Good evening, Council, Tom Wicknick. I've been discussing the social media events, or effort that the city's been putting on, and I've been coming forward with compliments about that and how you're doing it. But tonight, I have a little concern that I need to talk about. And the concern starts off with this, first of all, compliments to Peggy Breen, Scott Hayman, Solomon, and Kyle Blades. With any of your social media sites, I just want to compliment you that you have not found it necessary to block me from any of your information that you're putting out. And I appreciate that, because that's in the spirit of a public office. But Mayor Bruin, who keeps talking about transparency.
There's no block.
Pardon me?
There's no block.
I'm blocked from your site.
Watch me do it right now. If that's the case, I will gladly remove it. That has not been done by me or, I'll gladly reverse that in five seconds.
Okay.
If that's the case. You go up and see, sir, I'm just, I.
Isn't it great how we have technology?
Yeah, I just, I, I want to be very clear that I have, I personally have had no hand in that, and if that's happened, then I'll get it corrected immediately. Whether I know how to do it on the phone or not is something different, but.
Because I just searched that on my phone and it does not come up.
Let me take this, I'll be very clear, Mr. Wicknick. If that is the case, it will absolutely be reversed. I have absolutely no problem with that.
All right, very good.
There was never an intent or any other reason that that would have been applied.
Okay, then I don't see any need to have to go any further with it. Thank you. That is transparency.
Is there any other public comment from the floor? I don't even know how to block somebody.
Good evening, council, ladies and gentlemen. The Infrastructure Committee asked me to bring up an issue I brought to them about, well, maybe not an issue, but the, the town's bike lanes. How, you know, I noticed that even for a small city, the, the city has a rich bike lane network, and it's ripe for protected bike lanes and protected intersections. So I wanted to make the council aware of that.
What is your name?
Oh, right, my name is Harry.
Thank you.
Sorry, yeah. My name is Harry, like Harry Potter.
Okay.
Yes.
He, he gave a really good presentation at our Infrastructure Committee and talked to us for quite a while.
Yeah, so I do have some pictures of examples of cycling infrastructure across the world and across the US as well. So you can take a look at these sometime. And, and so, so that's all. I mean, I just wanted to see if you have any questions or reactions.
So I would just like to add, while, while Harry's up here, he gave a, a really good presentation on just how other countries have been able to use, just by altering the way the streets are painted or slight structural modifications, the flow, protection of bike lanes, and maybe we could facilitate a better, you know, make it easier for the biking community to get around Ridgecrest. And so I thought it was commendable. I appreciate you showing up, and you sat around for the whole time and kept giving your inputs. So I'll pass you guys down these images. Give me some of the same images. We have the Infrastructure Committee. They're all just ideas and thoughts of how things have worked in other countries, and then some, some examples, if they're in here, of what doesn't work very well.
Yes, one, one picture is something you should not do. The rest of them are all good pictures.
And some of them look like what we've done in Ridgecrest, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You'll, you'll know when you see it.
I'm just, I'm being facetious, but here's the, here's the images.
May I ask a question? Are you advocating more additional, different? What is it you are advocating?
So the, the, the bike lanes are already painted out, which is great. You already have the foundation for protected bike lanes. Now you can add different kinds of barriers, concrete, bollards, cars, other things to, to separate car traffic and bike traffic. And that, and you, you can easily see why it's much safer that way. But the, the, the not-so-obvious change is intersections. In the folder is a picture of intersection where you, in, in Ridgecrest, let's say you want to turn right with a car, you'll have to cross into the bike lane to do that. That's obviously dangerous. So in the upgraded intersection, you don't change very much in the, the intersection. You just get rid of the dotted line, make it solid, and you add a little curb that keeps the car separated from the bike. And so that's safer for the cyclist and the driver, and you don't have to change the intersection very much. So the.
Thank you.
Sorry.
And for the benefit of.
Go ahead. You're going to say something?
No, I said, "Thank you, Harry."
For the benefit of the council, I just want to add, we have asked Public Works Director to look into this.
Just to look at what's actually feasible. Is there, what can we do in Ridgecrest, as Harry alludes to? We've already have some structure. Maybe there's addition, maybe when we build out in the future, there's changes we can make, or maybe there's modifications that won't be too costly that we can do now. So we're gonna, we're gonna be looking at that.
Okay.
And thank you again for showing up.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your participation.
Thank you for hearing me out.
Before I switch to the phones, Mr. Wicknick, if you should have to leave before the meeting's over, please make sure to let me know, and we'll stop and talk, because I, there's literally nobody listed on my blocks. And if, but I'll be happy to make sure if there's something that I need to submit to make a correction, be happy to. Any other public comment from the floor? Seeing none, any public comment on the phones? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move forward with our next item, which would be council announcements. Going right to left, Peggy, any council announcements?
I'll just make an announcement about the fair. We are, there is gonna be a fair this year, so, and if somebody will help me out on that date, is it December?
December the 21st to the 23rd, I believe.
Not, not December 21st.
Uh, October 21st to the 23rd. My apologies.
So everybody, keep that on your, on your rosters and come out and support the fair this year.
My apologies. 22nd to the 24th, because there is no Thursday this year. It's Friday, Saturday, Sunday, October 22nd to the 24th. And you, and it's a $5 fair, $5 entry, and I can tell you, I know that they put a lot of work into the fair programming. If you remember the 2019 fair, several of those acts are back this year, and the demolition derby is on the Sunday night, if you're interested. And actually, I think I saw somewhere today that the prize pool is up over $12,000 for the demo derby this year. So they've got a ton of participation, and it should be a lot of fun. It'll also be nice to get outdoors and hear some, smell some gasoline and hear some traction. Okay, I have no other council comments, council announcements. None.
Yeah, I floated on social media that I'd do another cleanup day, like the one I'd done back in April. That was gonna be this weekend, but I didn't get a lot of traction, but, which is okay, because it was just poorly timed on my part. It was, I, I should have planned it before a council meeting where we could talk about it and discuss it. So I'm gonna push that out to the 23rd. And even if nobody shows up, I'm still gonna be out there picking up trash along Bowman. I think the area that I've seen people discuss the most is Old Wilmart and Bowman. I know that the other area that I think is probably one of the worst is out behind, oh, what's that road? It's like over by Burrows. There's that section of desert, so you got, you got Leroy Jackson, and then there's that section of desert, and you got Burrows. There's a lot of trash back there, just from years.
Oh, between Oasis and Burrows?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
No, 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 no. Further, further north than that. So if you're right, you go behind the department stores.
Oh, okay, so like along the, the curve portion of that. Okay.
What's the date it's gonna be on next?
So the 20, the morning of the 23rd, just do it for a few hours, 8 to 12.
Of November?
Of October, of this month.
Okay, October.
Mm-hmm. Bernie's gonna help me out with some trailers, so I'll at least get one trailer there that we can throw trash bags into. And then I'll, I'll work with Jed or Captain Dampier on getting with the county to make sure we're good, but should be fun. The other thing I have is another, I'm sure that.
Can I, can I just jump in there real quick?
Yeah, yeah, no, please.
If there's another area that you start looking at, I've had citizen response, and I did some looking myself, there's an area behind Oasis and where the Dart thrift store moved to. There's a wash there that, that is becoming an accumulation of larger items because it's, it's not being seen and.
Yeah, no, you're right. Actually, when, when I first wanted to do the very first trash day, Jed and I got in a vehicle and we drove around the whole town. We searched the whole city limits, in and out, every area we could find that's the worst. At the time, we decided, you know, Bowman was the worst. But then the public feedback that I'm getting is continue down, you know, that west side of Bowman, so.
Yeah, and that's great. I was just, just as a, on the radar.
Well, now that it's not boiling hot, maybe we'll, you know, we'll do more. I just wanted to skip those summer. People usually don't like to be outside picking up trash in the, in the blazing heat. No, we would just meet, so what I'll do is I'll put it out on social media, or I can, I can announce it again at the next social, at the next council meeting, just with a map of where we're, I guess I could put it out. With so, is social media okay? Yeah, I'll, I'll put a map out, like I did last time. I'll put a map and a meeting location, and all this stuff we'll have. This time I got a little bit more support. I think Caltrans and BLM are gonna help us out with some stuff, too.
All right. Absolutely. Once he's done, I'll.
One, one more thing. I think Narissa probably would have brought this up, the movie in the park on October 29th, is that correct? I think so. That's sponsored by Alto One. I think the Ven, Ven communal eatery is gonna be there, as well as a taco truck.
And it's Hotel Tran 3.
Yeah, yeah, Hotel.
Hotel Transylvania 3.
So you're more up on.
Summer vacation.
Good, okay.
And I, I know my Papa Drak.
Right. All right, that's, that's all I have. Go ahead, Peggy.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I want to offer my thanks to Carolyn Bertrand and Indian Wells Valley Airport District, who are going to have a special event at the airport on the 16th at 10 o'clock to honor and rename the park at Indian Corn Airport, the George Bertrand Park. And any of you who have been involved with the airport and know George's impact on the airlines, on the airport, on the community, on so much, and this is a golden opportunity for us to say thank you to George, George's past work. And it's going to be a slight memorial also, since he's passed away, and we didn't have a, a funeral for him. This will be a time to say thank you, George, for all you've done at the airport. And I know Nancy Bass is up at the, up in the heavens watching this, because George and Nancy were a solid committee, working together all the time, sometimes at loggerheads, and always with great respect and love, but mostly because they believed in the airport. And I am so proud to be a part of that airport community in the past and present and future. Thank you.
And I did forget one more, just a hurrah for our community and for the Ridgecrest Regional Hospital Foundation. They held their annual gala. The photos were in the paper this morning, but over $50,000 raised. It's a great annual event. So glad to see people out there supporting our foundation. And that foundation has brought technologies and testing equipment and things to this community that normally wouldn't be in a smaller town, and I, I commend them on their continued work. And more importantly, I commend the, the hospital employees and the volunteers and everyone involved with the foundation who's given over many years to make that happen. So congratulations on another great event. Next item on the calendar is approval of the draft, as the consent calendar. All items considered in the consent calendar are considered, can maybe considered in one motion. Ricka, where's my script? There's one item in the, any, any member of the public or any member of the council wishing to pull an item may do so.
Sorry, sorry, Eric.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so we have a, one item in the consent account, which is the, we'll read them now. One item, item number two, approved draft minutes of the Ridgecrest City Council dated September 15th, 2021. Does any member of the public wish to have an item pulled? Does any member of the council wish to have an item pulled?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, you're messing with me. Okay, we have pulled the one item, and it's item number two, the draft minutes. Councilman Raze Rotnum.
Small correction. Go to the other committee, board and commissions. IWV Water District, Mr. Blades, he did not go there to ask IWV GA to finance. It says IWV GA, it should be IWV WD.
IWV WD, that's correct.
And also, it's not to finance extraction fee, it is to finance replenishment fee.
Good catch, Solomon.
Thank you, Solomon. I'll correct that.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Based on that, is, based on the two changes presented, is there any other changes? Any other discussion? Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion second?
Please vote.
Five eyes, motion.
Five eyes, merchant carry. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item number three. This is a resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council to appropriate a portion of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. This is a staff report presented by Ms. Frizay. She's gonna spend some money.
Good evening, council. This is a resolution to appropriate a portion of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. In March of 21, the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law, and this provides one-time fiscal relief funds to state and local government. And this will mitigate the continuing effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. The ARPA funds include state and local fiscal recovery funds to support urgent COVID response effort to decrease the spread of the virus and to replace lost public sector revenue to strengthen support for vital public services. Ridgecrest allocation of the local stimulus is $6,930,958. We received the first 50% of this in July of 21, and we will receive the remaining balance in July of 22. The United States Treasury adopted the interim final rule, along with a list of frequently asked questions as guidance regarding the use of the ARPA funds. And the final guidance is expected to be released in fall of 21. The allowed uses of the ARPA funding focus on four key program areas: to respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses and nonprofits, or aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality; to respond to workers performing essential work; for the provision of government service to the extent of the reduction in revenue; and to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. As we relate, as we wait for the release of the final guidance from the Treasury, staff is currently needing to develop recommendations for the funds to be presented at a workshop to invite community feedback and participation at a later date. Staff feels that there are two appropriations that should not wait until this workshop due to the importance and potential increased cost of delaying these projects. The first one is a contribution to the RACBB Welcome Center. In 2019, the RACBB competed for and was awarded the designation to be a part of a network of 18 California Welcome Centers. This will allow the RACBB to provide information to travelers to the area and the local community members, and to expand their marketing outreach. The RACBB secured a lease for this Welcome Center in February of 2020 prior to the pandemic. But due to the pandemic's negative economic impacts and a severe decrease in revenue, they have, it affected their construction timeline, causing the RACBB to be unable to proceed with revenue generating strategies. So they have presented us with a, a funding plan, and they are requesting $649,000, where they are detailing the use of these funds. And we would like to enter an agreement with them that would state that they would follow the requirements of the ARPA funding. The second use that we're requesting to appropriate tonight is eight additional police vehicles, which include packing heat software. The Ridgecrest Police Department consists of 16 patrol units, 10 of which are refurbished. 10 of which are refurbished Ford Crown Victorias. These are at the end of their second life cycle. And they are no longer reliable and will ultimately affect officer emergency response times. Currently, we have eight new Ford Police Interceptor utility vehicles on order. But the purchasing of the new patrol vehicles will assist in increasing the reliability and sustainability of the patrol fleet. These vehicles are equipped with Ford Motor Company's technology called Packing Heat, which is a software solution that temporarily raises interior temperatures beyond 133 degrees for 15 minutes, reducing the viral concentration inside the vehicle by more than 99%. The use of this technology will reduce the exposure of COVID-19 to the officers and citizens who are inside the police vehicle. The cost of these vehicles is not to exceed $500,000. It includes the vehicle purchase and the outfitting of police equipment. And with that, I'm available for questions. And we also have Carrie from the RACBB and Captain Dan Pierre from the Ridgecrest Police Department.
Thank you, Shree. So we'll go ahead and, I was going to do discussion, then we'll do public comment, and then we'll bring it back for final discussion. And we'll go left to right. Any questions? And as you said, Carrie and Justin are both here. I'll let you start.
Sure, I have a few questions. The first one's for Captain Dan Pierre. And Ron, if you have the answer or Captain, I think it's a pretty easy one. But when I was reading about the, I didn't go online and Google. I was hoping just to get the answer from you guys about the Packing Heat software. Is it, so it's software and hardware, right, in the car? Have you had a demo or any kind of a, I mean, not just, have you seen it in action? Does it work?
Go ahead, step up to the mic, Captain.
Oh, man, see, I was trying to get you out of it.
I spoke with the captain. Sam renewed his department several months ago. And he had just got six of them. And he said it works flawlessly. Obviously, in the middle of the summer, we get that 15 hours, not 15 minutes. But in the winter, it does a great job of keeping that temperature up, especially after use for his transport.
Sure, no, absolutely. And I guess my only other question, I don't think that you, like you would have to have a crystal ball. I don't know how you'd have the answer to this one, but I'm going to ask it anyways because it's the first thing that I thought of, and that is that this additional hardware, is it going to increase wear and tear, maybe on the interior of the vehicle or something? I don't know how you'd know that. I mean, because I'm doubting it's been in use for long enough to know. I just know that you, the police department, have got an amazing use, more than amazing use of the vehicles you have now. I just would hate to see us lose some of that quality.
What do you know, this stuff falls under their warranty. And in the first few years, it will be different.
Awesome, thank you. That's all I have for you, sir. My next question's for Carrie.
You want to go through one row with the police and then one row with RACBB? Would that be more effective than having them come back and forth? Okay, so why don't we just address first the, anything on the PD side? Will we just go down?
I have nothing else at this time. No other specific questions. I think it's a good idea.
Then we'll come back and we'll ask Carrie to step up.
Sure.
Okay, Solomon.
How about if I have some general questions?
Just ask them. Well, basically, who's going to be in the hot seat?
Okay.
We're going to bring you back for discussion after public input.
I read the interim rule as well as the frequently asked questions. Interim rule was way over my thing, so I couldn't understand. So I am solely depending on your recommendation. So I want to make sure these two items fall within the ARPA.
Yes, they do. I actually have the interim rule and the FAQs and where they fall highlighted, if you want to see that later. But they do fall under it.
Okay. Then question to the police department. So if the temperature goes up to 133 degrees, so that happens when the passengers and the driver are in the car or when the?
No.
You guys are already wearing gear.
Yeah, 140.
Okay, so you have already placed an order for eight vehicles and you are asking money from the ARPA for another eight vehicles, correct?
Yes.
Okay, right, thank you.
I have about one thing to say. When completed, if we approve this, will that mean that we will have 100% replaced your fleet?
Yes.
Just wanted that heard. 100% replacement of the fleet within?
Of the patrol fleet.
Of the patrol fleet within a 12-month period.
Yes, it would.
No more questions? So that was my question, too. So you'll still be maintaining the 16-vehicle fleet?
Yes, we keep some of the other ones as backup units. But most of the Crown Vics have over 160,000 miles. And even though they're great vehicles, it's time.
That's on top of a rebuild, isn't it?
What's that?
Isn't it on top of you guys refurbishing them?
No, I think that's total mileage.
Okay.
There are a couple that have over, you know, quarter million miles on them. Where we had had 130,000 miles on them, refurbished them, and then put another 100,000 miles on them. So it's getting to the point where you have now stress issues with the frame itself and everything's kind of failing.
Roger.
And we've had breakdowns on priority calls, transports and stuff that I don't want to say they're completely unreliable, but it's getting to that point.
Sure.
Now, just out of curiosity, what brand or what model cars are we looking at?
It's the Ford Interceptor.
The Ford, okay.
Yeah, they'll all be purchased locally at the local Ford dealership.
That was going to be my question. Are we going to be able to purchase these locally so we invest in our own economy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Who is the supplier?
Excuse me?
Who is the supplier? Whom are you buying from?
Locally.
Locally, okay, thank you.
Okay. No other questions for Captain Dan Pierre?
No, sir.
Okay, Carrie, come on up, you're next. Good evening, Ms. Frederick. And we'll go right to left this time. Peggy?
Carrie, I appreciate it. When you called me today and asked me if I had any questions and I asked you that if you could talk a little bit about, I had told you how a friend and I had gone to the Welcome Center in Barstow. And I was very surprised to see the amount of people going in and out of that facility. It was packed and buses were stopping there. And all of them were, and I, all of the people were going there before they went to all the outlet stores at that mall. And I was kind of surprised. And I went and asked them why all these people were going there before they went anywhere else. And it's because the Welcome Center was giving gift certificates. And they were minimal, like $5 off, $2 off, 10%, whatever it is that you spent in a particular store. And so the money that was invested by the community in that Welcome Center was also then spent back there in the community. And I asked if you were going to be able to do that. And I was so pleased to hear you say that that's something you're working on in the future because I like the idea of being able, in particular, close by restaurants, all the stores that can be used. And it's just if they stop there, they can go elsewhere around the community, not just the restaurants. And so I encourage the businesses, if you're approached by the RACBB, to give gift certificates. What a great way to guarantee business that is, could have been spent at the next community they may stop at to be spent here. And especially when the buses come in, and I know they are. So I appreciate the phone call. And I called the Welcome Center in Barstow. And they said they didn't. And had I spent time and done it in a manner that was more appropriate, I could have asked them ahead of time, but I didn't. And they didn't know how much money was spent. But they thought it was well over $30,000 a month because, and I thought that was low. And I said, really? That's all? Because the buses, we saw 40 or 50 people getting off, and it seemed like it was really low. And I got a call back, and so they thought it was about $150,000 a month that was spent. So that's right on. You can do that and we can invest in our community and get money back from. So to the businesses, if you're asked, please support this effort from the RACBB. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'm fully in support of it. Thank you.
So I just want to say, I really do support the RACBB, too, and the accomplishments that you've attained for the community. And so my only question is, you know, this is a pretty sizable chunk of money. And as far as once construction's completed and you're up and running, do you have a plan for sustainability and, you know, from within to maintenance and keep the facility, you know, up and running and for the long term?
Absolutely. It's a good question and we do. And so we have been working on this transition for about a year. Well, two years, start, stop, you know, it's been a crazy process. But working consistently for a year in this transition. And we are implementing two things. Processes to track and to establish metrics so that in moving forward and in the future, we can, you know, ensure that sustainability. We're really working towards ensuring that once the construction at China Lake is complete, that we don't see a dip in our hotel stays and our economy. So we're taking the next few years to really work towards establishing that for the future. So it's laid out in that document. And so I'm confident that the sustainability of the Welcome Center won't be an issue.
Fantastic. That's all I have. So I don't know how many of you guys have had a chance to actually walk into the construction area, but I've been there now twice and I snuck in today to take some more pictures. You know, they are doing a spectacular job of converting, you know, what was an empty space into something. And there's some things that they're doing. Obviously, one of the big things is they're moving out of having the two leases simultaneously, which has been a substantial burden on RACBB. That's something we just have to understand. As they signed this lease February 2020, and then our world got turned upside down and theirs got doubly turned as a construction project. And they've burned through substantive amounts of their reserves in that process. I've seen what they're trying to do with their kiosks and the virtual 360s and the things that they're hoping to achieve. And I think like anything else, everyone's going to have 1,000 great ideas for them on day one when they open. And a year from there, they will have 1,000 of their own good ideas at least implemented or taking place. So I just would encourage the community that looks at this and understands that one of the big reasons why the Welcome Center is so important is if we're going to make a shift in our tourism aspects, this is the greatest jumping off point we can because we now placed Ridgecrest in the other 17 Welcome Centers statewide. I still remember one of the first conversations I had with somebody when I moved up here was, "Oh, Ridgecrest, yeah, that's right up by Big Bear, right?" Because they just did Wrightwood. And then they'd say Ridgecrest, and that's like somewhere in Northern California, right? And they just don't know the name. And this provides a huge aspect to that tourism. Only question I'm going to pose, because I've seen obviously the space and I know the amount of work that's going into it and all the other ideas you have is, I have a thorn in my backside over electric vehicles. And nothing in here addresses electric vehicles, but I know that's something that's been talked about. If you could just address the long-term strategy in regards to EV vehicles. And my reasoning being is if you're driving in town and you need to find a charging station, what better place could we park you at than the California Welcome Center where you get a full blast of what is Ridgecrest? And if you could just address that for me?
Sure. We have, due to budgetary constraints and I'll say time constraints, just the nature that this process has been, some things, we're taking a phased approach. And the electric vehicle implementation is one of those. So we have plans to apply for a grant. That grant opens in October and we are totally prepared and lined up to, we even have paperwork filled out. Once the grant is open, we will apply for that. And then any additional expense not covered by the grant will backfill with the ARP funds. I'm hopeful that we'll see it soon. What does that mean? I don't know, but it is something that we are planning on.
I've been hopeful to see a permit for 12 weeks, so I understand exactly what you mean. Okay, I have no other questions. Solomon?
I have always supported RACBB. I have been advocating for ARP funding for RACBB from the beginning. So this is a good opportunity for RACBB. I do want to make sure that we have done the due diligence before we give this money out to RACBB. My question is, so you have already started construction?
Yes, sir.
So how much have we spent so far?
We have spent $200,000 on construction.
And that is out of the loan amount?
Yes.
So will these funds pay off that loan?
Yes.
Is that permissible?
Yes.
Sure, are you 100% sure of it?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I have the.
No, that's okay. If you say that is permissible, then I'll go with that, so.
It's a planned expansion delayed due to the pandemic.
Okay, thank you. And you asked money for three phases. So when is phase one expected to be completed?
We will be opening on November 6th. So that will be the completion of phase one. Phase two, I look, I plan to look towards after the first of the year.
And phase three?
I don't have a set date for that yet.
But a lot of those things are going in upfront, right? Security and stuff like that.
Right.
Yeah, I think there's several of the phase threes that. Inventory and POS, I know they're working on for right now. I just wanted to address, he's looking at the phases and I know there's pieces of it.
Yeah, and this plan and this document was created several months ago. And so some things we've had to shift a little bit, like that security, point of sale, inventory, just so that we could hit that grand opening timeline. That's important for the Welcome Center program and the fact that they were very patient for two years during COVID. We didn't really see that it was in our best interest to delay the grand opening. So we just are, you know, planning and executing and doing all the things at once. So a little bit of that may have changed since then, but it's mostly still in line.
So when do we expect to reap benefits of this investment? Hopefully.
Yeah. Honestly, I believe immediately. I think that between, no, I'm sure, with our marketing efforts and with the fact that the grand opening is going to be highlighted not only through our marketing efforts, but also through Visit California and the California Welcome Center, we're going to have immediate visibility. And so I think we're going to see a burst. And then in the following months, we'll kind of be able to gauge now what is the baseline. But I expect to see an increase immediately.
I mean, you are doing a good job, absolutely, no doubt about that. But I just want to make sure we are doing this in the right way. So thank you very much.
So all the questions I had have been asked, which is good, I guess. Always good when you go last. Fully in support of your efforts, Carrie. Thank you for everything that you're doing. I guess the only question, if I was a, if I had not been through all this step-by-step and a constant conversation, then I have a little bit more knowledge. So if I was a member of the community, probably a question that I would ask is, is this a good investment of this one-time money that we're getting? And so then I'm just saying to you and to the public, yes, I believe it is a good investment. I don't say that lightly. I remember when we first started discussing this one-time money, the very first thing I said was, "I want to see this money go anywhere. I want to be in infrastructure." I mean, I remember, and Ron said, "Back up their hot shot. There's other people and a community to consider." So I knew he was correct. And I think that we have seen the RACBB show a net positive for years and years and years. So I don't see how we won't reap a benefit in the future. So I don't see how we won't reap a benefit in the future. I appreciate everything that you're doing.
Thank you.
I have just a couple of things to add. We have to remember that the RACBB is there to assist our local hotels. And by them having the ability to attract and focus on bringing people into town that will stay in our hotels does have a substantial benefit to those businesses. It does have a bottom-line benefit to the city of Ridgecrest, that as we fill up these hotel rooms on the weekends, which we hope the visitor center will take part in, that will also benefit, you know, not only the city, but all of our local businesses by driving additional people into town. There's also another component that I know Carrie's been working on, and that is to help with some of our local events, some of our tournaments and stuff like that. She's been working very well with Marissa in trying to organize these events and help our local nonprofits that run our baseball and softball leagues to add a little bit of support to them. I know it's just at the beginning, but I think there's a vision there that will, that this asset will be used to help in that endeavor. So I think it's a, it's a great investment. Also allowing them to have the funding to pay off their loan frees up a substantial money for their debt service, which can be put right back into, you know, their day-to-day activities. So I think this is a shot in the arm that they need. I know from our numbers how much revenue they lost over the last 18 months. It's just now coming back, and a lot of that has to do with the reopening of the base as well as the rebuild. So I think from a staff's perspective, this is a very great investment in an entity that is there to support our local economy in the way of hotels and businesses.
Agreed. I have no further questions.
I brought a worksheet right here. There wasn't a table in the back. I just set a stack there. And it talks about the importance of travel and tourism on the state economy, but it breaks it down to our congressional district, and there's specific numbers in there. And so I think that that might be helpful to the public, just to really see the...
Do we have that in our data package, or is that separate?
No, this is separate.
Okay.
I can give it to you. So that's here for the taking.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll go ahead and now go to the public. Can I ask for any public input? And Captain and Carrie, please wait a second if there's any questions that we need to address. Thank you, sir.
Tom, Mike, Nick, just real quickly for the RACBB, fully support the effort that you're doing. One thing I'm noticing since the construction started on the base is with all the people coming in from out of town, that I've been approached in my business a couple, at least three times just lately, about people that are working here on the base, and now they're looking at moving here. And they're asking questions about, what kind of community is it and that type of thing? How's the crime? And even working at the motocross this weekend, I was approached, as I was on patrol out there, by a couple in the motocross thinking about moving here. So I see that as very positive, that people are looking at moving here. So my question would be as far as that, is RACBB in coordination with the base on all these people coming in that are just here for temporary, you know, some kind of reach out to get word to them about your effort in the city as far as you? Do you have a specific program that you're using in that area?
We do work closely with the bank, or the bank, the base, excuse me, their public affairs department, and also their, I don't know, I would call it like fleet and family, to provide those resources to people onboarding at the base. Or also, we do work with them just to, I don't know. I feel like there's always the conversation of increasing recruitment, and so RACBB can assist just in getting that information to the base, because we do have a lot to offer. So the answer to that is yes.
Okay. Any other public comment from the floor? CNN, we'll go ahead and go to public comment from the phones. I think we have one caller on. Caller, state your name.
Kathy Russell.
Please go ahead, Kathy.
Yes, I just wanted to know, they mentioned that had it highlighted, that these both were in the criteria for receiving these funds. I was wondering if that's something that could be posted on the website, either the city council for the agenda items or something, so that, I think the Welcome Center is great. I was just looking to see what exactly criteria it was to meet the funds from the pandemic.
You're speaking specifically what the ARP criteria is?
Right. And how that meets that criteria. So that's all I was, and they said they had it highlighted, so I thought, is there some way we can just see that?
Okay. We can certainly, we can certainly do that. I would have you reach out to Cherie, and she can certainly provide that information. And as we get closer to the town hall, we'll make sure that we kind of put that on a larger scale for the purposes of that conversation. Will that work, Kathy?
When is the town hall, by the way?
We don't have a date scheduled. The biggest reason is because we're still working with interim rules versus final rules, and obviously, many of the projects that we're looking at would be impacted by what those final rules are. These two items fall clearly in the interim guidelines as provided.
Okay. All right. Well, that will be posted, I'm assuming, on the website or something, when that town hall meeting will be?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any other callers? Okay, no other callers. We'll go ahead and bring public comment back to the council. Any final council comments, or do I have a motion for approval of the resolution?
I have no comments. I make a motion for approval.
I do have a question, though.
I'm going to do motion second and then discussion.
Okay.
Okay? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. And...
My question is, okay, we are giving this money, maybe it's a question to the city manager, so what is the oversight we are going to have? Are we going to get any information on the progress, what is happening, and how do we monitor that they are spending the money for the purpose which it is given for?
Martin is working on an agreement that we'll enter with, with the RACBB outlining what the responsibilities and reporting requirements are for that organization to receive, or after they receive the funds. Part of that's just an insurance that when the inevitable audit comes from the federal government, that we have everything in line. So every purchase that we have will have backup justification where it's connected to the interim or final rule and the FAQs. And so a lot of this, one of the reasons why we've, it's been a while to get to you folks regarding this, because there's just a lot of uncertainties still on how this money can be spent in other areas. So we're waiting to get a little more clarification on some other areas. But on these bright-line ones, we know exactly the area in the interim rules that we can guide it based upon. So we're collecting this because we know eventually we're going to have an audit, and the auditors are going to want it, so...
So we'll have an agreement incorporating all these conditions?
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Please vote. I'll do Rick's job for her.
Thank you. I'm working with the delay on the video.
Thanks, Carrie. Thank you, guys. Five, five eyes, motion carries. Thank you both. Next item on the agenda is discussion regarding the board of the IWV Groundwater Authority. And we'll do report and discussion from Mr. Hayman, and then we'll do public comment from there.
Okay, so this meeting is going to be one of the ones that falls like in the cracks. The IWBGA has not met since our last meeting, so I really don't have anything new to report on outside of the last discussion that we had.
The Water District meeting occurred before our last council meeting, and there were some brief commentaries. I guess, is there any other questions that we can oppose to you, or any of the council members would like to between now? And then we can obviously take, my question is just, has there been continued discussion since that meeting?
There has been some discussion, and I think it's, we can, we want to elaborate on, we've...
Yeah, we are, we're working on a meeting with the Water District. I know that Mr. De Ziba is going to bring it to his board on the 13th, and so we should have a date where the city and the Water District meets shortly thereafter.
Right.
Is there any other questions for Scott before we...
Just maybe some of the general questions I've, I pose, I think I've posed for the last almost two years now. It's just making sure that we're, that's just me as a council member, back to our representative, that I just like the, I like the idea and hope we're always striving towards gathering more data. It's always something I'm going to just hound on and beat on, and I'm not going to stop until I'm off the council, because I'm just, I like data. I like to see the information. And I know that probably since last we talked, nothing's changed. I know that there was a, I don't know if it was sponsored by the GA or by the Water District, there was a well sunk in the El Paso, or at least in the Southwest somewhere out there.
Right. And so we're hoping to have some data, you know, back, I believe it was November was the tentative month that we should be able to report back, and so on. I'm anxiously awaiting to hear, you know, some hard data coming back from that well also, so, but we'll definitely report any of that type of...
Sure.
New information back, you know, to the council.
Yeah, it's just always something I'm going to keep hounding on, because I just don't know. I mean, we, I heard, heard a mention of Sky Tim data when, I think it was at the Water District meeting. I don't, there's so many meetings, they start to blur together. But I think it was at the Water District meetings, Sky Tim data was mentioned. But I don't know if that data is even usable with the actual technology itself. I think there's depths that it has limitations to. That's my own personal...
One of the things, too, I'd like to bring out is that, you know, I wait all year to wait to hear, you know, what the National Weather, you know, Service is going to forecast for the winter, you know, forecast. And unfortunately, we've been forecasted to be in another La Niña weather pattern, which is going to put the desert southwest into another dry drought-type situation. And anyone that's, you know, following water in the western region of the United States is seeing that it's not getting any better. You know, the reservoirs from Utah to Arizona to California, it's, it's very negative outlook right now. And so I think it behooves us to continue to look at, you know, what the GA is trying to, to, you know, put together here, and that's one, you know, a sustainability plan. And two, purchasing water, and three, getting the infrastructure to get that water into, you know, the hands of the basin here. So I think it's, it just hits the point home even more why, what we're doing, even though it's a lot of work, and there's a lot of, let's just say, trees in between each of those steps. But we need to keep pushing forward to have a solid plan for this valley.
I have two additional questions for you. One, I think can even be aimed at you, Ron, and really it's just me echoing some questions that I've get from the community. It isn't that I don't know the answer, but it's something that I want to discuss here. One question I often get is, this extra money that the GA is asking for through the Water District, what is it going for? Right? And how is that going to put water back in the basin? That's a, that's a very general question that people ask. And so I just, I just want to reiterate it. It's not that I don't, I don't know it, and it's not that I don't repeat it to people when they ask me personally.
Yeah, the replenishment fee also includes a shallow mitigation fee. The replenishment fee is being collected to be able to purchase imported water supplies. In other words, Title A water. There are potentially three sources of Title A water that our consultant is looking at. I know that on the next Groundwater Authority's agenda, we're looking at having Wolf Hansen brought on board to look at the Groundwater Authority financing and bonding, to be able to purchase Title A water. I think it's more efficient to buy it all at one fair swoop than to buy it over a five-year timeframe. So we're looking at that. But yes, that is being primarily used to purchase Title A water. It is being used in part for some administrative costs, but not that great.
Thank you. The only other question I have to ask, and again, this isn't me putting like anybody's feet to the fire, I'm just asking the question because the community asked me, that is finances, are we tracking finances well? Is it being done correctly? At least to the best of your knowledge?
I can answer that question. In fact, we had a conference call that included Mr. Rattora and Don Zadiba from the Water District. As you know, it's like in any other financial tracking, if it starts off poorly, it doesn't get any better until you finally get a hold of it. I know that there is a concerted effort to put this budget in a way that looks familiar to most of us that have municipal budgets, and I think that is being done now by RSG. I know that we, most of Stan's questions were answered, and I know that staff is trying to put that budget in a way that is understandable for everybody. So yes, that is, it is in progress.
Okay, good. Just want to make sure we're being as open as possible.
Can I piggyback on that one? In-process is a big word. The financials have been in-process for six months, two years? Is there a definitive, we're going to present something solid by X? And I'm not addressing that to you, I'm addressing that to Scott, too.
I think the part of the issue is, yes, I know that RSG is looking to put the budget in financial software, is where it should have been to begin with, but it wasn't. The budget is not that understand, I mean, you can understand the budget. I mean, they have revenues, they have expenditures. I think at times, we've done a poor job of explaining the budget. I understand the budget even in its current form. I can track it. I just think there's a frustration in how, if you have a proposed budget that you pass, and how do you then, you know, attribute in that budget new items that are now paid for that may not have been budgeted originally? So I think those processes are going to be honed a little bit. But at the end of the day, if you ask me where the money's at, I can tell you, I can look at their budget and tell you, it's a very simple budget. It just needs to be in a better format that I think most people understand.
Yeah, I always use the big three, you know? You don't mess with a person's wife, you don't mess with a person's kid, you don't mess with a person's wallet. And, and right now, I think that's where part of the public sentiment challenges are coming from, is we, you know, we, we're hearing this in both the dialogues. I just, is there any definitive date that they're going to deliver something that's, from an expense side especially? I can understand the budget side, but especially from the expense side, that...
The expense side's very easy. I mean, I think a lot of this has been marketed in an effort to convolute things, in my opinion. You know, every meeting, they, the board approves every expense. So there is no hidden purchases that the community doesn't know. It's in every, on every agenda item, what we're spending. So there is no hidden expenditures, because the board approves every expenditure.
No, I didn't. Didn't expect that.
So I think it's been marketed in a way that, that it tries to make it confusing. And I think that by putting the budget in a, in a, in a format that most of us are used to seeing, because let me frank with you, a lot of people who look at our budget, even though it's well-prepared, laid out, do not understand it. Because there's a lot of accounting rules that go into play.
Yeah, it takes some studying.
It takes some studying.
So I think when you start talking about, do people know how much money's being collected? Yes. They can tell you how much revenue's being collected, because it's only coming from a couple sources. And then I think you can easily state who the expenditures are going to, because we only have a limited number of expenses, and they're approved by the board every meeting. So I think it has a lot to do with just marketing.
I'd like to add, too, that when you were commenting about dating back two years, the records were passed from agency to agency. So it was county to Water District, and now Water District back to RSG. And so one of RSG's major tasks is to bring that together, so that there'll be a solid, you know, reoccurring base to...
Is it going to stay with RSG then and not bounce around for different entities?
Correct.
So even, and then the chair changes every year, correct?
Right.
Okay.
And so that should, hopefully, once they get the accounting system in formatted in a ways that, like, management will be saying that we'll be able to, you know, have a very readable, understandable to the board, to the public, to anyone wanting to look at those records, to be able to ascertain...
Just as a reminder, the finances of the Groundwater Authority have been audited three years in a row, and there have been no significant findings.
That's good.
Yeah, I think a lot of it has to do with just, it all boils down to, is people are upset about paying the fee. They're upset about the costs, and there's a whole lot of reasons why the costs are high. And I think that over time, we should get control of it. I think a lot of it has to do with just how the Groundwater Authority was structured in the first place. So I think by just having a certain software that we put it into, that is just a database that is designed for municipal budgets instead of a spreadsheet, an Excel spreadsheet, I think it will allow for a little bit clearer tracking. But remember, we don't have a lot of revenue sources, and we don't have a lot of vendors that we expense to.
Thank you. I think, I'll go... Thank you. I think, I'll go ahead, Peggy.
I had one question that was asked, that was asked, I think critically, but also honestly, is how much money have we gotten in grants, and where has the grant money gone? And I said, "It's very simple. All you have to do is look at the amount of finances that it says in everyone. This is grant money, this is money from the Department of Water Resources." And the comment that was made is, "Well, I, we understood, it was sold to us that this was all going to be done by grant money." And I said, "I don't think you understood it, or perhaps you didn't research it well enough, but there was significant grant money that we received for this." And some of it is, has, it has been expensed, and that's where it is. And so I'd like us to be able to say, "We got a dollar and eighty-five cents from grant money, and this is where it went."
Well, we did receive grant money to develop the Groundwater Sustainability Plan. We did receive some S-Stack funds that were used in Trona, but we also have the ability to provide for an extraction fee that pays for administrative costs, because you have to pay for a manager, you have, you know, costs that go along with having a organization. But one of the things that, I guess in a perfect world, it would have made this a whole lot cheaper, would be no litigation.
What are you going to do about that? I don't have any further questions at this moment. I just, I'm trying to just think of items, making sure we're discussing. I don't like it, like sometimes I've heard, and it's off and on, and it's because I think that we should probably get close to my microphone. I've heard the public say you guys don't talk about it enough, and that's probably true. We get awfully close to the forest, you know, to the trees, and so we don't always, not always looking at the forest. And so we're always head down and driving through and listening to the reports from the lawyers, and constantly keeping abreast of the situation, as we should. But it does take, sometimes we have to take a moment and sit back and talk about things that even if we know them off the top of our head, I think it's healthy to talk about. Can we, I don't want to take, I mean, let's see, is there, can we discuss any of the litigation? Is that something we need to leave alone?
Well, most of litigation is...
I mean, there's like, I mean, how much do we want?
Most litigation is discussed in closed sessions, so I don't think we can...
I'm just asking that I...
It will be my recommendation that we really don't go there unless we are in closed session.
It wouldn't be a meeting unless you told me to. Tell me, just tell me to zip it, Mark. Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Nothing else at this time.
Gotcha. Solomon, did you have anything else?
No.
Okay. So let's go ahead and open it up to public comment, and we'll take any questions. So first, we'll take public comment from the floor. Is there any public comment from the floor?
Tom Wicknick, general question. As we're seeing continued pictures of dried-up reservoirs in California with slivers of water sitting in them, one thing that people talk about is we keep hearing that the GA is banking water, buying water. And of course, the side tongue-in-cheek comment to that is, "What water? There's no water to buy." Well, you know, it's just a generic statement and criticism. But at the point of, you know, every, as a side mention to that is that every year, we see the figures of how much water flows out of Sierra Nevada out into the ocean from the thaws that we don't catch in California, the thousands of acre-feet. And this has got nothing to do with anybody here, okay? It's Sacramento politics. But I guess the question would be then, is the GA got any kind of active effort to try and encourage Sacramento to work on this storage? I know, I know we're trying now, but this is today. We talk about the future, though. Are we going to increase capacity? Is the GA doing anything to try and increase or encourage Sacramento to increase capacity? I know McCarthy's working on it, and all our elected officials are working on it. I'm asking, is our GA also involved in that?
I would say the GA's focus at this point in time is on securing our water future. Going back to purchasing Title A water, and I know that there may be zero allocation this year, but when you buy water through the State Water Project, on average, you get about 62% of the water that you own. So if you have a thousand acre-feet, on average, you're going to receive 620 acre-feet. Some years, it's going to be a thousand, some years, it's going to be zero, but over time, it averages out to about 62%. So although there may be zero allocations this year, doesn't mean that their water rights don't exist to purchase. It just means that they may be zero this year and 100% next year.
So how does the GA establish, I guess, the proprietary right to buy into those rights? Where does that come from?
You purchase them. They're a commodity.
Is it allotted out by the state then, or how is that handled?
I believe it's controlled.
Except the fact that I can't, I have a business, I can't go to the GA meetings at 10 o'clock Thursday mornings. That's why I'm asking maybe a question that's been talked about, but I know a lot of people ask this question.
Well, there's a lot of accessibility. If you're at work, you can always call in, because they do accept phone calls for questions.
When I got customers standing at my counter, I can't call in.
Well, if you wish to put something in writing and send it to April, she'd be more willing to ask those questions for you if the need is there.
Okay, thank you for the offer.
I'd just like to add, Tom, that your question's kind of more on a national level, or your comment was more on a kind of a national level, as far as what, is the GA, you know, looking at stimulating, you know, the state to look into these other areas? And, you know, from my own personal view, not as, you know, the chairman of the board, I think that is a good comment or area to look at, because even though, you know, you look at environmental, you know, situations in, you know, the climate, the scope of climate change. And they're saying that the seas are rising, you know. You would see, you would want to think that the state would be looking at ways to put desalination plants in the major metropolitan areas, you know, down south, San Diego, central, you know, LA, and up in the northern part. You would think that if they were to have more water in that region of the state, then that might offset and have a compensation, you know, back up that chain to allow more water for communities inland and in the foothills. And so I don't, you know, the GA isn't in a position, you know, we, you know, to, we're working on our local basin. But I think it's, I think it's an important, you know, aspect to be seen. If you read articles in the water world, you'll see, you know, a lot of organizations in the state addressing that and, you know, kind of crying out for it. But whether or not, you know, it's going to be a actual completion or, you know, something that the state's going to, you know, look at seriously, who knows?
Okay. I appreciate your comments, and I agree with them. I just think possibly maybe the GA should consider possibly some kind of outreach effort to try and influence California, Sacramento a little bit.
I think so, but, you know, likewise too, we're in a situation where we're being critically overdrafted. You know, we're in the kind of the forefront of a few basins that are trying to get our plan and get things rolling. Shortly now, it used to be two years, now it's a year, and I think it's less than a year, where we're going to have 73 other basins coming on board looking for water. So I think it behooves us to keep our focus on this basin and to look at purchasing the water. Like I said before, keep it simple. Have a plan, purchase the water while we can, and look at the infrastructure, you know, the infrastructure to put it into the community.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, I was going to say something just real quick on your point, just advocacy is critical, period. And I think that that's what you're speaking to, and I commend you on bringing that up. I just want to say to the public, you know, we have all been hearing the concerns from Trona or from growers or from this, "Hey, guys, he's not wrong. He's absolutely right. Send a letter, get involved. He lets your voice be heard about the other challenges, especially because we just talked about ARP funds as it affects us here locally. There's ARP funds that affect the state as well. And how those funds are spent or allocated, I'm not going to stand here and say I have a lot of hope, but I certainly say that doing nothing is going to ensure that nothing happens. So it's good advice advocating at the state level if you certainly want to get involved."
Absolutely. I was just going to just tee off on that. You know, it wasn't until you sort of bring it up to me, how many other basins are standing up their own groundwater authority, that I really it impressed upon me the urgency to get ours lined out and squared away, get control over the groundwater that we have now, because who knows what the future's going to look like. Sorry, go ahead, Ron. I know you're trying to get in.
Well, I'll just say this. Any other public comment? You know, nobody's getting timed tonight too, so, you know, we got more reasons to talk to Rick about...
Actually, what I missed out on was Tom.
Yeah.
Might have been laid out a couple.
I want 10 more seconds back for that, okay? I just want to make sure we saw it. Ron can go on.
I can do that too.
As I've been listening to the public, especially even Tom's comment, about understanding the purchase from the State Water Project, I have yet to hear anybody explain how that happens. I've had, no one has explained that there, I believe there's 27 contractors with the state for water. That if the water's purchased, it has to be through one of those contractors. And I've never heard anybody say that, let's say, you're right, the average is 62% roughly. So to get 5,000, you need to buy 8,000. Do you realize that whether you get the water or not, you pay a yearly maintenance fee to that contractor? And that could be millions of dollars, and you won't get a drop. And on top of that, when you do get the water, then you pay for the water as well. So people need to understand, and all you have to do is pull the LEDWP contract they have with the state, and you can see what kind of money they have to pay for maintenance, just maintenance. Every year it goes to maintain the system. It's regardless whether any water's delivered or not. And every year, that changes, and that's, and it's very, it fluctuates, but it's very high. So I'm saying that to get 5,000 to 8,000 acre-feet, that you could easily be looking at $5 million a year in maintenance fees to the contractor you're dealing with, with no water at all. And then when water's produced, then you're paying for the water. I haven't heard anybody do those kind of explanations. And all you really need to do is look at the LEDWP contract. And there's a number of state contractors. You can look at their contracts that they have with the state for the water. So your answer, Tom, is the state isn't, you're not buying the water from the state. You're buying it from one of the contractors who is, has an agreement with the state to buy it. So I just think that the public needs more explanation. They don't see all the dollars behind what's involved in purchasing water once you have the entitlement. And it's a great deal of money. But I think it needs to get out into the public, and they need to better understand it. It's part of transparency. So they get to be on your side a little bit about understanding more what's going on. And the key is, we don't have other options either. You're talking about costing millions. We all agree with you. The problem is that we don't have any other place to go for water. Everything's a crapshoot, especially because you could buy it on the spot market as well. And maybe find it much cheaper, but you may, like, there's probably no water on the spot market now. But you may have it one year, you may not have it another year. So you can look for spot market water. People are looking to sell water. But to lock into a contract through the State Water Project is a very expensive thing to do, and you may not get a drop of water. And that's a scary part of it, you know? And you put all the infrastructure in, you don't get anything delivered. But I believe 62, about 60% is about the average over quite a few years. It has, you know, last year was, I think, what, 22? The year before that, it was, you know, maybe 18? So not very much. And you're right, based on that, you look at 8,000 acre-feet rather than 5 is what we're looking to get. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any other public comment from the floor? Seeing done, I have public comment on the phone. Caller, state your name.
Kathy Russell.
Please go ahead, Kathy.
Hey, how are you again? Well, I agree with Ron. I think the transparency is really important. And that's where people are upset in the litigation, is again, there's a lot of, I read the GA, went to the GA website, read through as much of the GSC, of the sustainment plan as I could. Still doesn't spell out, frequently asks questions like, "Okay, you're collecting this money, but..." And also, Ron Strand mentioned Title A water. We can purchase it, but how are we going to get it here? And I looked at the plans to transport water from Cal City or Owens Valley that aren't in critical overdraft, and what that would cost, how... And again, it's transparency, and like Ron Kozinski said too, it's like, tell the public what really is you're paying for. That's my main reason for being upset. It's not like it's overly expensive. It's like, what am I paying for? And how is that, how are we getting that? I mean, you're in a great opportunity right now where people play, pay automatically, and they don't look at their water bill, and there's a huge percentage that just pay it, and, okay, it's whatever. But to ask my son or others, "What does that pay for?" He goes, "I have no idea what I'm paying for." So there is a lack of community awareness and responsibility. And especially, people look at government today as going, "What are we going to, what are we going to do? What can we do as individuals to try to make a difference?" So I would like to see more transparency and a better explanation of what that's paying for.
Ma'am, before you go, if you send me an email, I will forward you some of those documents that are online that will help inform you of some of your questions.
I did reach out to the GA, and she said she was going to get back to me, but I have not received any of those documents either, so...
Well, if you forward me... If you forward me an email, my email address is at the City Ridge Crest site. I will forward those documents to you.
Well, it's not just me. Other people need to know. So that's where the conversation is coming from.
You're more than welcome to share those documents.
I can, but again, put them on a website to say, "Cut and dried. We're collecting this money to replenish the fee, to try to get the money, Title A water. This is what it's going for. This is how we're going to get it here." Just kind of outline it so people can understand it.
Actually, those documents are online. If you send me your email, I can direct you to those.
If they're on the GA website, good luck. 360-some pages. I'm just telling you, it's not that clear, and neither did the GA person say it was that clear, so...
If you forward me your email, if you forward me an email, I will make sure you get those documents that you can share.
Is there any interest in you sharing that strict information, that kind of cut and dried information with the public, besides me having to forward it? I'm asking, this is where, and Ron Kozinski said it, other people have said it, where are we? You can forward it to me, but how can people access it if they really want to know?
I mean, I think, so surely the best way we get that information out is to discuss it here at these meetings. Because as Ron said, it's posted, and I'm not saying this at you negatively, I'm saying this to the whole community. I mean, the information has been discussed at the GA meetings, because I've listened, I've listened even post after the meetings to hear what information's getting out there. I've asked all of, I've asked Scott countless times, I've asked Ron countless times. So I guess the next thing we can do is discuss it at these meetings. And so that's why I asked the question here. I think we've asked it before. And I think, I guess, we just keep on asking it at every meeting we can, right? Just to make sure that people are listening. Because I think it's posted. I think it's out there. I know that I have it, and I don't think it's because I have some privileged information. I don't think I have anything the public doesn't have. So, I mean, is that, does that seem sufficient, Kathy?
Well, I'll email Ron and see if that information is sufficient. I just trying to figure out through the website to try to get that clear-cut information of, "Here's my water bill, and this is what I'm paying, and this is what it's for, and this is what we expect to get." I don't see it cut and dried that way without perusing a bunch of documents. I don't know where to look, so, anyway.
Kathy, I appreciate what you're saying, and I, when I first was running last year, I said, you know, water is not my strength, and I never claimed it. And I understand that it's very hard, that all the documents, but there's not a, every time you peel the onion back, there's another layer to what this complexity of water is. And that's why there are so many documents, and there's not a clear-cut, one answer that satisfies all. There not going to be in this issue. And I appreciate what you're saying, and I think Ron can provide you, you know, the overviews or executive summaries or things like that that provide those directions. But it is a complex, many-hours-of-reading problem if you really want to understand all the intricacies between AVAC or why Owens Valley is no longer wanting certain lines and certain documents, and why the GA is talking about asking for replenishment fees financing by the Water District, or why we're talking about Title A, or why the edits... I appreciate it. I just don't think the community understands that there's a lot of complexity, and there's not one clear-cut, "Here's an answer to satisfy all." It's a very complex issue, and it does require a lot of research and understanding, as I've learned over the past year.
I understand that, and like I said, I tried to read through all the documents. I guess I just wish there was a clear-cut way so that people could be less antagonistic or less worried about where the money's going. or less worried about where the money's going, so, without having to go through 300-and-some pages of documentation. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy, we, and I, and I'm confident that if you have any specific questions, that if you'd email, you know, either Councilman Hayman, or the GA directly, April, Ron, you'll find, any one of us is more than willing to try and find you an answer to a specific question, as much as we can.
And so, and I wanted to say something again to the public about this, and it's something I've tried to put out on social media, I've actually stopped doing that, because people, I don't think were listening to me on this specific topic, it's not even intentionally convoluted. As anybody up here, or like Ron Kozinski sitting out there, you know a lot about what's going on with the water situation. We, I can't speak for any of you, I know I have done countless, I mean, not, I mean countless hours, you could probably add it up in, in days, the amount of hours I've done researching and reading and reading, and then going to talk to people who might know more about, well, they have one aspect, or this person has the other, I have spent an amazing amount of time, because I thought it was important as a representative to understand as much as I could. So, that's why I constantly tell people, if you really have a question about water, get ahold of one of your representatives, just whatever they are. The best of me to get ahold of your groundwater authority representatives, if you're in the city of Richcrest, then get ahold of one of your council members, Peggy knows a lot, Scott knows a lot, Eric.
Learning.
Eric's learning.
I'm not claiming expertise.
Right, just get ahold of one of us, and I guarantee you, we will have most of the answer, and if we don't have all of it, we'll direct you towards the right answer.
To be clear, I will welcome any call, I just will probably refer you to somebody who could give you a very expertise answer, because if you want to talk about other things, I can talk about those.
So, okay, did you have any more?
Any other callers online? No other callers? I see somebody's hand raised, you want to make a public comment, then I would need you to come on up, if that's what you'd like, ma'am. We'll certainly provide this opportunity. Please come forward. Thank you, ma'am.
I just read in the paper that the council approved three new housing developments.
Can you pull the microphone down?
Mic down, so we can make sure we can hear you. Thank you.
If we're not sure how much water is gonna be available in the future, is that very wise to be bringing in more people, more population, when we don't know if we're gonna be able to provide water for them?
Which one of us wants to go?
Yeah, no, no, it's better answered either by your chair of the GA, or by Ron, I'd rather have Ron answer the question, because I do have an answer to you, I don't want you to think I'm skirting it, I think you should probably better heard from the staff.
Well, one of the reasons why we have the replenishment fee is to replace water that's taken out of the basin, eventually through an imported water project, is the simplest answer.
Well, I know the whole southwest of the United States is gonna have to put a limit on the population growth, because there is simply not enough water right now to go around. And it just simply cannot grow anymore. And I don't think there should be any more growth until the people can, the governments can provide for the water that will be necessary for that new growth.
Right, and that is one of the reasons why we have the replenishment fee, so if there is a potential for growth in the community, we'll have the water to be able to handle that. Right now, I think we're averaging 0.6% a year over the last decade in growth in our community. So typically, you know, we have not grown much, I don't anticipate we're gonna grow much, I know the three track maps that were approved are probably more speculative in nature than they are realistic. So those are not gonna be built at this time, they're just track maps.
And I don't know if that's all of the answer you wanted. Well, I think this is where, this is where we start to get into the complicated part of it, and it's not that people don't understand, it just takes time. Part of that is, there's a, there's a, there's a supply to the basin, and how much water is stored there. Part of that is, that some of that water could, is desalinated, and part of that is that water is then divided out throughout the whole basin by, by faults. And so when that water is divided out, it could be at various depths, it could be in different locations, and there's been, a long, been discussion about it being open and closed basin, and where that water comes from. We know a lot of the water comes right out of the Sierras, comes right out and hits the fault, some of it goes south, some of it could go under, and so we know that there's probably, I think, nine, that's another thing that we need more data on, there's a variation between what people believe is the actual storage in the basin, and then how long we can pull that, and then the depth of that water. So we see water being able to support us for this near future, but what we worry, what I personally worry, is that I'm gonna get older, I'm gonna look back, and then maybe we haven't done the work now, right now, that maybe should have been done, hindsight's 2020, there's a lot that should have been done in the 60s, and the 70s, and the 80s, and now here we are, 2021, so let's just start doing this stuff now, to be prepared, so that my, my daughter has a future here. So the answer to your question, in general, is I believe we're okay with our moderate growth to low growth we have now, as long as we're not gonna blow up overnight, which I don't see that happening, it hasn't happened in a while. But, oh, go ahead, Scott.
Well, no, I just want to add that, you know, when you look at growth, you know, as Ron Strand said, that, you know, 0.6, or if you use 1.5, or, you know, it's, it's been a historical, you know, slow, steady growth, and for, you know, other communities, you say Georgia is an example, you know, they've had tenfold growth, you know, and they have an extreme water shortage, and they're gonna be looking at a plan that, you know, is probably in a billion-dollar range to try to bring water into, into their community. So the plan, this motivates us to, like Kyle Blades said, that, you know, we have water for the short term, the slow growth isn't going to dramatically impact that, but it should motivate us that if we want to continue to have a community, continue to have a one, you know, average 1% growth, we need to be really motivated and very proactive in getting this plan in action and, and, and push through, so, but to stop growth and to stop what we're doing, because of it, I think is going backwards, and I don't think it's a community that should even be an option.
Agreed. So I don't have anything else, sir, I know, I know I've rambled a lot, but I thought that it was important for us to ramble a bit, the community hears us discussing.
We also want to give the community a chance to ask questions and hear comments and stuff like that. Is there any other, seeing no other public discussion, is there any other council discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on our agenda, which is item number five. This is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the city of Richcrest and United Food and Commercial Workers Union Eight, and I believe this is Ron.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, what I have before you is a updated memorandum of understandings with UFCW. Who is UFCW? There primarily are employees that work in the Streets Department, in Parks and Rec, there are code enforcement, there are also the folks that, are the wastewater operators out at the wastewater facility. Their agreement expired June 30th of 2021, staff met with members of UFCW, we worked out a new three-year agreement, now this agreement also has annual reopeners, that if, you know, anything should change, or we need to discuss stuff, we can reopen and discuss on some issues, but this agreement carries on the same compensation enhancements that we provided to the other association and, and associations within the city, an increase in employee, employee plus one, employee family, increase in medical benefits to the employees, just as an example, currently, for an employee and a family, they get 936 a month, we're proposing a $400 a month increase to bring it up to 1336. The whole idea is to provide some compensation to our employees to make our, our position as an employer a little more competitive. You know, right now, we do have some employees that are paying anywhere between $400 and $1,200 a month out of pocket. Now, mind you, these are the employees that are making anywhere between $18 and $25 an hour, so that's a, that's a significant amount of funding out of your pocket. Now, as I stated previously, our staff, you know, Ricka and Trish worked very hard with our PERS medical provider, to get more local doctors within our community, which makes some of our plans much more viable, so we have basically a basic plan for our employees that they should not have to go out of pocket very much to be able to have, you know, full health coverage, which was important. Also in this agreement, we, are proposing a 2.5% longevity for employees after 20 years of service, this is consistent with a benefit from all the other groups. The only other item that we had on here was a, an increase in standby pay for those employees that work for the Streets Department and wastewater, and wastewater specifically. Previously, we were paying our employees to stay on call for the entire weekend, and in town, 25 cents an hour, which to me was, was not something that we should be doing. You know, you're, you're having somebody stay home in town for the full three days, and we're paying them, I think it was $24, it was, it was nothing for the whole weekend. So we've increased that amount to each day that's on their day off, it's a, it's a two-hour straight time standby, and then on the evenings or the nights that they work, it's one-hour standby. It's a, it's not a huge impact to the budget, but it is significant for those employees that are required to be on call. And obviously, you know, we have employees on call, you know, anytime we don't have folks at the wastewater facility, for obvious reasons, because if something happens with the plant, somebody has to be able to respond, because people just don't quit flushing their, they don't, they don't, yeah, they don't quit flushing their toilets.
It becomes a blank situation?
Yeah. So we did make some, you know, small increases, it's really not where we should be, you know, it is becoming more difficult to recruit and retain quality employees, but based upon our budget at this time, this was a step that, that staff, you know, is recommending to council to take. It, it should just be the first step of trying to, you know, correct some of our compensation issues, obviously, you know, if we want to retain and good employees and be competitive, you know, we're, we need to continue to work on this. So attached is the actual new agreement, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
So the one thing I wanted to, Ron, just to make sure that I'm clear, this is actually the second thing that we've done in addressing the staff concerns, because we had the pair agreement, and now the UCW.
Yeah, you also, you also had mid-management confidential.
And then the management confidential.
This is, this is the last group.
This is the last group. I just wanted to stress that, that we've been working these, this since day one, to find these solutions, this is a project that Scott and Peggy started last year, and has continued to move forward. It's not everything, guys, we know it, and this is to our staff, we know it, but we're making the progress that we can and the progress that we need. We still have a need for a long-term revenue solution to, to move this forward even further, but we are keeping our focus on trying to find those incremental opportunities, and this corresponds with what we did with pair as well. I want to commend the union groups, as well as city manager Strand, in, in, in working this, this is, employee situation is, is, as we found out over the last six days, an interesting topic of conversation, but the fact is that every employer out there is having these challenges, and ensuring that we retain our, our employees, and the idea that it was 25 cents an hour over three, I, I just want the public to hear that literally there's five council members here that heard that, and if there wasn't a simultaneous eye roll, there was a thump in the head simultaneously from all of us, at the idea that that's what we were doing, and, and I hope that the wastewater team and, and Public Works and everyone else that's affected by these things understands, we get it, that, that, there's, there's a point to where we were in some fairy tale Wizard of Oz world, where 25 cents was apparently a recent, reasonable compensation for being on call, so, that's all I have to say, I'll, I'll go left to right sense. Did you go first, last name? No? Yeah? I don't know. Go for it. What Peggy have last word?
Yeah, no, I didn't have, you guys have been working on this, Peggy, yourself, Scott, you guys have worked on this for a long time, with the city manager to try to come up with something. I just commend the efforts, we don't, I don't think I need to go any further than the public probably wants to hear, is this worth doing? Yes, it is worth doing, and we need to do more as a city council, we will continue to work on that, and I guess, as a committee, are, are your efforts still ongoing? I'm looking at you, Scott, really.
It's finance, isn't it?
Yeah, I was gonna address that when I spoke, but I can address it now, but.
Yeah, I just, I just want to, you know, I was like, just to make sure that the staff knows, and the city knows, I, as one single councilman, believe that this is a genuinely good thing to, to do, I'm, I'm fully, fully support of this resolution, and I believe that we, as a council, are gonna continue working on it. And then you can discuss it, I guess, when it gets down to you, no further comments.
Yeah, I fully support this, these are small steps we have been taking, most probably someday we will have a giant leap in resolving this problem, so.
So I'm, I'm very excited to see this come before us tonight, I think it was about a year ago, maybe a little bit longer, we sat in this room, and we had the employees in front of us, we sat, we had meetings where we had, you know, a room full of employees, and, and the, and the first meeting, it came to a consensus that the employees were happy that we were talking about it, and happy that, that we were looking at forming a plan of action to start this process, and we promised them that we weren't gonna let this go, and, and we haven't, and so these are definitely pro, proactive steps, they're productive steps, and it's Kyle Blades, Councilman Blades had addressed that, are we going to continue it? And I'm gonna say unequivocally, yes, and as long as I'm on the city council, I, it's gonna be a forefront issue for me. I think it's, you know, water, yes, is important, but for a city, this is one of the most important issues that we have, you know, for the, for the council and the city to, to, to address, and so, and I hope that we can set the stage with our work, that this is a continuum, that we don't, it will pass from council to council, that there will be a format, that this is a continual work in progress, because it's gonna take time, because we have such a limited budget, for us to, to, to get to that point where we're, you know, at a good equilibrium with our employee compensation, we have to stay in a constant, work, work, and work at it. And so, again, I'm happy that we're here tonight, making another positive step forward, there's discussions and, you know, future things that, you know, the city's looking at, to increase revenues, that we can take that money and, and reinvest it back into our employees, and we constantly pushing for that, so congratulations to Ron Strand, he has worked extremely hard to the whole council, and I know you mentioned Peggy and I, but as a council as a whole, we have, I don't want to speak for you guys, but everybody has been equally supportive in, in this measure, and so, but I know that Ron has worked diligently on, on, on getting this to this point, and so has our finance director, Sharice, and, and everyone else that's involved, you know, so anyway, so again, happy to be here, I support it fully.
The only thing I'd like to say is thank you to everybody, but most of all, to our staff, and to the workers who understand that this is just one step, it is just a step, and if we, they compromised greatly, they wanted everything, I understand, we wanted to give them everything, but we don't have everything to give, and so that we understand that this is not the end, it is just this step. So I thank all of them for making the compromises and understanding, but it comes from the budget, and that's where the key is, our employees and our budget, so thank you all.
Okay. Next would be any public comment, is there any public comment on the resolution? Seeing none from the floor, is there any on the phones? None on the phones. Bring it back to council, do I have a motion for approval of the item as, as recommended?
Motion to approve.
Second. Please vote. Five ayes, motion carries. Next item is item number six, this is a resolution to approve the professional service agreement with the firm Woodland Engineering, in the amount of $69,903, to provide design and construction management services for the crosswalk upgrades project, HSIP grant project, and authorize the city manager Ron Strand to sign the agreement. Mr. Reed.
Good evening, council. Mr. Colp prepared a staff report and resolution for one of three highway safety improvement, holy moly, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
For highway safety improvement projects. What this focuses on is upgrading our crosswalks at places of impact on our arterials, the locations are Westridge Crest Boulevard at Alverd, we see a lot of pedestrian traffic there. there, Westridge Crest Boulevard at Sanders, and the Downstreet Crosswalk to the Charter School. Basically, what it does is it provides us with enhanced solar-powered rapid flashing beacons, high visibility signs, advanced yield lines, signage, and advanced pavement markings. This is a 100% funded grant, so there's no local match money. It does, however, come from the general fund to start with, and then it is reimbursed. And with that, I am open to any questions. And there is one typo that I have to fix in the resolution. It says, "Now therefore let it be resolved," and the two numbers do not match. It should be 69,903, and we have 92,383. So will you have a solid answer? I almost gave you your wisdom. I almost guarantee you, and I was like, oh, there's one more thing I have to do. But with that, I'm open for any questions other than typos.
What would we do without someone?
Hey, we have our special reach. I love it, because that's making him second read it and third read it. You ever want confidence in your staff, make, know that they know that they've read it three times. We'll go ahead and do council comments first. Peggy, any comments?
I have no comments.
None here?
Yeah, one question, though. So, we'll be first spending the money and seeking reimbursement? Is that how this works?
Yeah, that's how all of our highway safety improvement projects typically work. You are billed, once you have cut a check and there is a canceled check and they can see it, you have a whole package that gets submitted to Kern County, and then you get reimbursed for that.
Okay, thank you, so.
So, we've seen, we've seen these in the past, right? HSIP grants, those come from the state, is that correct?
Yeah, this is state money, it is not federal.
And it's recurring, right? You're constantly looking for HSIP grants?
Correct. We did, one that immediately comes to my head, because we're doing work in that area, is the crosswalk improvements that were done over on Graff Street in front of Emmanuel Christian School. We had a signal project a couple of years back that tied our signals together and gave us some abilities to control them from the office, and I wish I could think of more off the top of my head right now.
No, that's okay, I'm not trying to quiz you on that. I just want to make sure that the public understands what's going on here. We know it's grant money, it's grant money that's recurring, it's not like it's a one-time thing, it's something you're always looking for. And I'm guessing you're, I mean, you just named three different crosswalks. Are there going to be other crosswalks you focus on in the future, next fiscal year?
Absolutely. So, these, and these funds are, I must say this, that these applications were put in before I was here, and the staff that was here prior to me did a great job, because these are highly competitive funds, and for us to get awarded three in one cycle...
Right.
That speaks to the testament of the thoroughness of the staff that prepared these.
That's good, that's, I'm glad that you said that, because that was going to be one of my questions, is why are we looking at three of these in one unit? Okay, that's good.
Do I need to announce it for the record, I assume?
I will, just to be safe.
Okay. Okay, we talked about how the money's coming in, crosswalks, you'll look at future. Hopefully, you, you do as good as Barb did.
I would say this, too. I know that, I can't remember if this was the funding we used for, I want to say it is an HSIP project that we did for our bike lane stuff in the Bowman Bike Path. So, some of the stuff that Harry brought up in his public comment and brought up in infrastructure, I think that this grant program might be right up the alley for looking at some if we do decide to go forward with any improvements on bike infrastructure. Don't quote me on that, if that's the right grant for bike infrastructure, but there are ones that are solely dedicated to like bike paths and things like that, so.
The last thing I'm going to do is just, you know, for the, for the record, I'm never going to quit asking about the crosswalk to be put in there at Lost Flores and Downs. It goes, it goes across, I'm just going to keep running my mouth about it, because I've asked for it, I think when I was...
Is that on, are you talking about on, actually, does it go across Downstreet and it goes east to west on Lost Flores on the south side? The crosswalk to nowhere?
So, you got, yeah, it's on the, on the west side.
On the west side?
Yeah, the problem, the problem is there's no sidewalk there.
It's a crosswalk to nowhere, yeah.
It's a crosswalk to nowhere, and that sidewalk would have to be put in. But it seems really important to me, so I'm not going to quit bringing it up, because there's not very many schools where kids still walk to school like that. The rest of the schools, everybody drives up to them. Lost Flores kids are still walking. And there is a light, not light, a sun, you know, suns in people's eyes going down that street, so.
Somebody I know sits on the infrastructure committee, and if you would like a sidewalk project brought to the infrastructure committee to connect the sidewalks.
I brought it up, and I was shot down. I'm not going to quit bringing it up.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it doesn't mean you can't bring it back up.
You know what, you're right.
So, if you want that on the agenda...
I got a feeling you just got a standing item on your agenda.
We'll discuss it, we'll discuss it later. Because you may tell me the same thing everybody else told me, it's, at this time, we don't want to spend that money. But if you're going out for HSIP grant money, I would love to see money spent towards that.
I'm going to chime in there with one that I just threw out today, literally, but, you know, there's not a crosswalk along French between Burrows and China Lake Boulevard to cross into the park from the south side to the park. And I just, no, there is not. There's not a single crosswalk except for China Lake and at Drummond and French.
Really?
Just as another...
I'm going to blame the state, that's Highway 178.
It's not Highway 178. But, I mean, if we're talking about crosswalk areas that, you know, we're talking about how people are using schools, how kids are crossing out there, you got a middle school and a high school both in those areas that are crossing out of the area, and there's no way to cross unless they go all the way down China Lake before they cross, and you know that that's not happening at some point, so. Just something else to throw a feather in your hat.
Other than that, thank you for your hard work, and I know you're going to work hard in the future to get the same amount of grants.
I can take zero credit for this one. This was well before my time.
Well, thank your department, then.
All my staff.
No further questions.
No other questions from council? Is there any public comment? Seeing none from the floor. Is there any on the phones? None on the phones? We'll bring it back to council. Any other council discussion or obtain a motion for the approval as presented?
I don't know, we just keep talking so Travis can't.
I know, but I was just going to say...
Except you have to do another one afterward.
I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure that Rika heard me. I know she's online tonight.
Oh, I apologize, thank you, thank you.
That for the amended.
And you're, are you helping me right now, too?
I am kind of helping you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Ms. Shalyn continues to have some technical difficulties. She was not able to stay on the phone call any longer. She, the meeting is still being recorded, and she will transcribe the minutes from that recording, and I will just call the votes for the remainder of the meeting. With that, is there any other discussion? Do I have a motion for the approval as presented?
So, more.
Have a second?
A second.
Five ayes, motion carries. Next item is item number seven. This is a resolution to approve the professional service agreement with the firm Willdan Engineering in the amount of $92,383 to provide design and construction management services for citywide arterial flashing stopping signs and advanced pavement markings project, HSIP grant project, and authorize the city manager Ron Strand to sign the agreement. Mr. Reed?
So, this is grant number two that was received of the three. This is to basically take every four-way stopped and arterial stopped intersection within our city and place the flashing that we see, like we see on Bowman, we see on Sunland, and put flashing stop signs up, just to bring attention to the stop signs. So, it is, again, 100% funded, and it was a testament to my staff, because I had nothing to do with it, and I'm open for any questions. And I do not believe there are any typos in this one.
Yeah, first on, is there any amendments that you'd like to make?
I think we did all right on this one.
So, we'll go Peggy down again?
Thank you.
I have nothing.
No comments.
Nothing. How?
No, no questions. I was going to ask you, I was going to ask you...
Are you swatting on him?
No, I'm not, I'm really not. I was going to ask you some questions about Willdan, and they're very, and the data, so something the public doesn't see is that the reason we choose Willdan, the reason we choose these people, they are very well-vetted. And if you download the agenda, you see the data package, you'll see that Willdan puts forth their case on why they're chosen to do the work.
Yeah, it goes through, these, all these go through, whenever we decide to award these to a consultant or seek outside third-party help, they go through an extensive RFP process in which we basically follow federal grant procedures for how we pick a consultant. We have, we set out a grading criteria, we show them, we want to know who the project manager is, who subs are going to be, what's your disadvantaged business enterprise commitment, what's your expertise, how many projects like these have you done? It's just a gauntlet of things, and then we have, our famous last line is, keep it simple, and we don't want pretty pictures, we want just the minutia of what you have. On average, the RFPs we get, we get three fairly consistently, sometimes four. The firms we get, they are 30 to 35 pages of strictly stuff and projects people have committed. So, it's a competitive process that we go through, you really have to read, and I'll be honest with you, the last four or five that we've done, the scoring breakdown has come down to like one to two points, some will get a 92, another one will get a 90, another one will get an 89. I mean, that's how close these are, so.
Yeah, I think I just want to make that clear for the public, that we're not just rubber-stamping things, so to speak. There's a lot of, a lot of data, a lot of work and research. Thank you, no further questions.
It's also important to say, we've also built a great working relationship with Willdan over the years, which is valuable.
Well, when I first got on the council, something that, it didn't bother me, but it was always raising a red flag, that I always saw Willdan. I would always, I only see one company, so I was always thinking, man, are we asking everybody else? Are we making sure to vet these properly? And I was always asking the question, and Barb was always like, yes, and he had to answer it every single time. But I, I'll ask it anyways, just like I did to you tonight. I'm going to do it again in the future.
Yeah, I was just stating the value of it.
And I will say this, too, staff has actually brought on, we're working with another consultant for the first time that we've worked with, which was BHT Engineering for the paving project we're working on right now. And we have continued to reach out, especially on our in-house money ones that don't have the same federal restrictions that you have to have people that are experienced with the federal paperwork process and things like that. So, we have been actively trying to reach out, too, and encourage other people that maybe have a little bit different perspective on things or a different background that might bring a new perspective or open staff size up to some new ideas, and so we do actively try to seek other people as well. It also keeps all these other ones on their toes, too, so.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, any from the phone? No one on the phone? We'll go ahead and bring it back to council. Any final council comments? If not, I'll obtain a motion for the approval?
So, more.
I have a motion and a second. Five ayes, motion carries. Next item is item number eight. This is a resolution to approve the professional service agreement with the firm Willdan Engineering in the amount of $58,100 to provide design and construction management services for China Lake Boulevard Adaptive Traffic Signal Upgrades Project, HSIP Grant Project, and authorize the city manager Ron Strand to sign the agreement. Mr. Reed, three times a charm.
Yep, so this is number three of three that we submitted for this grant cycle that we were awarded. What this is, is this is another upgrade that we want to do to our China Lake corridor. This updates our signals, our very old technology on them is very outdated. We have done as much as we can with the technology that we have, and we've gotten a synchronization project, and ultimately, we have not even touched the surface of what the synchronization project can do, because we don't have the capability on our signals. And this is the first step in actually maybe seeing what our synchronization project does. And I'll be 100% frank with you, Lauren and I have gone toe-to-toe, and I say toe-to-toe, it's not really toe-to-toe, we've just had good discussions about, because I'm a firm believer of, I think our synchronization is horrible, and I want to turn it off. But unless we take the time to work on it and put the money into it and investing in it, I'm kind of speaking out of place, because we don't know what it's capable of right now, because we can't even access half of what it's there for. So, and so this is another step into actually seeing what we can do and how we can aid traffic getting through that corridor and fixing the problems where you don't sit at the left turn off of China Lake into California for nine minutes during the synchronization and things like that. So, this is a step in the right direction to update some of the vital pieces within our signalized intersections on China Lake Boulevard.
And things like Raider that, 15 seconds...
Yeah.
Before they change, yeah. And I only brought Raider up, because there, obviously, we all get contacted by citizens at different times, and I know Raider was one of the ones I got contact on, so, I mean, this is going to solve multiple different issues up and down China Lake Boulevard.
I'm not going to say it's going to solve. It's going to be a step in the right direction for us to work towards a solution. So, we'll actually be able to use some of the software we have to a higher capacity than what we had been using. And some, just to reiterate this, some of the parts and pieces we have, like, they don't even make parts for the cameras we use. They don't make, that's what I'm saying, they don't even make parts for the cameras, that's the advanced detection stuff on them. There's, so, it's that we have to buy, find used parts from the consultant that we have that helps us maintain these. So, it's come to a forefront, we're trying to figure out a plan to, and we got, this was a good start, good step in the right direction for controllers, for things like that, which is some of the bigger issues that we see as far as maintaining the timing that we have put into them. Like anything, some of our intersections have radio. Radio is tough to maintain, it's a line-of-sight thing, changing weather sometimes, wind can twist dishes and things fall out of contact, so five of our signals could be in timing and then one could not be, and that throws the whole flow of the traffic pattern off. So, hopefully, this is a benefit to us, I think it will be. I spoke at length with, before I renewed our software that we use to monitor these signals with Willdan's traffic team, with McCain's technical side, making sure that what we are doing is going to play well together, because I said I'm not going to invest, spend $7,000 in software if we are not going to actually be able to use this, and it's not going to help us. So, we spend a lot of due diligence and a lot of time making sure that what we're doing with this program, we can actually use with the software we are buying, so.
I'm going to just be the first, and I'll let it go from Peggy over. The way you just described this, I think, is great, but it did make one thing go off in my head. I'd love to get information on this back six months from now, nine months from now. Tell me whether it's doing anything. Don't just leave me to guess that it's making an improvement or it's not making an improvement.
Well, I want you to actually drive down that road and not avoid it.
We're going to drive down the road, but we're going to, we're going to drive down the road the same way I drive down the road, with my head already 15 things down the path. And I'm not going to notice what other people may experience, but you could certainly say, it did make an improvement, it didn't make an improvement, it fell on its butt, you know, whatever the truth is, but I'd really appreciate some follow-back up as you get it going to its success or failure. I mean, I understand it's grant money, and it's great, and it's something that needs to be fixed, but I'd like to know how it turns out. Peggy?
Nothing at this time.
Never knew you'd learn so much about signals, huh?
Well, yeah, and why does it have to be so complicated? I guess that's my question, you know what I mean? It's kind of like, it's a timed light, and they all need to be set at a certain time.
Okay, I agree with you, so now when you come out of Walmart at 11:30 at night, and that signal is on timing for 30 seconds, and you sit in on the other side trying to go the other way, because it goes 30 seconds, and then it flips and lets left turns go for 30 seconds, and then it goes to the other side of the road and lets the left turn go in front of you, and finally, it gets to you, is that not going to upset you?
Oh, no, I have no doubt it's upsetting. We could go into, one of the lights changes, one of them changes rather rapidly on, and to the point where it's like, you want to assume that everybody's running a red light, but there, some of them are just that close, you know, so I just don't understand why it has to be so complicated.
Everything's complicated, and I mean, you look at, look at what cars are doing these days, that they drive themselves and they yell at you to put your hands back on the wheel, so.
So, and this isn't directed to you personally, but I mean, it's just, I see where you got your hands full with this one.
But, you know, honestly, I don't even know that I would actually say that it's complicated. I would say it's not necessarily complicated, we have just neglected them for years, because our light, our light infrastructure, other than the new, even the new lights at Norma, and when we did the Rich Crest Boulevard project, we did not put the newest technology on those. That's 15-year-old technology that went into those, because we didn't want to have multiple different controllers and multiple different things, that we're having a consultant that helps us with this controller, and then we have to have another consultant help us with this controller, and so...
And I'm sure increased flow of traffic because of increased vehicles and, you know...
Absolutely.
It's really coming to a point right now, so.
This has been a Mike Mauer question for years, so, yes, so I'm glad.
Yeah, I'm with Mayor Brennan, I'm looking forward to, you know, further...
So, hopefully. Hopefully, hopefully. So hopefully, hopefully, we can get something going.
The truth of the matter is what you said is best. We've neglected it. If it works, great, tell us it worked great. If it falls on its butt and this is how we need to look to make.
Fix it.
Fix it downline, whether we have the money today or it's something that we've queued for, you know, down the line vision, let us know. Either way, I think you nailed it and when you said it's just something that we neglected.
I remember when I was sitting on the planning commission that Mr. Colt brought it, had brought signals and active signals up multiple times on infrastructure on this and trying to, to move towards our infrastructure because it's failing and it's old and we can't get parts and we can't get this. And as soon as everybody saw the cost of a signal, it was like, mm, nope. So, and it's just one of those things. If you don't maintain what you have and you don't keep up with the Joneses, for lack of a better word, it just, it's going to become an arm and a leg the longer we wait. And it's become forced, not when it's budgeted for, so.
So this is only between California Avenue and China Lake?
California Avenue and College Heights, correct.
So we are looking at four stops, three or four?
California, Church, Upjohn, Raider, Bowman, and yeah, College Heights.
So how about the other nine?
So the other nine, right now, we have not, we have not done anything because we don't have the infrastructure at the other nine to be able to make the, and when I say the infrastructure, we don't have the capabilities of connecting to those. Those are all based solely in the cabinet. They're not on our network of signals based on line of sight issues, but hopefully with some of the things we're working on with, with race and other things that are coming up, we're hoping that, that maybe we can change some of this in the future, so.
Thank you.
That was going to be one of my questions is what's the percentage of stuff we're replacing? And can we get usable data, sorry, can we get usable data, right? If we're not replacing all of them? And it sounds like you're at least going to get, be able to show something in the next six months. The rest of that question is 58K does not seem like a lot of money to me.
58K is just the engineering side of it. This is not the full grant. This is just awarding the contract. I think we accepted the grant. It was like half a million, 200,000 and 100 and some odd thousand. Yeah. I think it was like $800,000 total that we were awarded. So this is just the design and, and CE. So basically what this is, is the plans that we're going to get for them, the traffic study portions, the things that we have to do to show all this stuff and to put these in and plans, and then it's the construction management side of it. So it's just basically the engineering technical side to help us with the implementation of the projects.
You have answered all my questions.
Okay. We'll go out for any public comment? Seeing none. Is there any public comment on the phones? Seeing none. We'll bring it back to council. If there is no other council discussion, I'll accept the motion for the approval of the resolution.
A motion?
Second. Please vote. Five eyes, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Reed. Next item is item number nine. This is a proposed action to approve a resolution of the Rich Chris City Council summarily vacating a drainage and utility easement within a, within a portion of former West Park View Avenue located westerly of South China Lake Boulevard. This says it was in, is submitted by city attorney and presented by Mr. Colt, which I don't see here. I'm assuming you're doing this, Mr. Reed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So this is in connection with the Dutch Brothers project previously by resolution in 1991, the public access portion of Park View, which essentially is the same area as what we see on California right now from into City Hall, but just to the alleyway right there and to China Lake Boulevard. There was an adjacent one right there that was the exact same. That was another entrance into City Hall. That was summarily vacated for the, or I'm sorry, that was excess right of way deemed back in 91. We vacated that, but we retained the right for public utilities to be able to be constructed there. Since then, Jim Charlon Ford has a wall. We have a couple minor drainage facilities in there. No utilities have used this easement, so therefore we have deemed that 20 feet of the easement is excess and not of need. And we feel that maintaining 10 foot for the drainage of the alley was necessary, which Dutch Brothers has updated and updated, is reconstructing and making it more feasible with their update of the alley that basically directing water from the alley so we don't have some of the minor flooding issues we've had in the alley in the past. And so we're retaining 10 feet of it and getting rid of the rest because it is surplus and not needed.
And I'll go ahead with council comments. Kyle, let me start this one.
I know, just a general question. What's the, what's the benefit? Why, I mean, you say it's not needed, but what's the point of getting rid of it?
So the point of getting rid of it is it's allowing a, a business to better utilize the space and it not be stuff where we would then have private improvements on public easement land where if then somebody could decide one day, a utility could decide to come in and say, you know what, we want to put one right here through your drive-through or through your, your power board. And so it, it, it basically just, it designates the place that if they want to do anything and they need to get a utility through there, you only have 10 foot off the side where there's already drainage, already stormwater or utility or something else there to, to put it, so.
That's reasonable. Thanks.
It keeps public utilities from being able to come in and just do whatever they want because we're properly controlled.
That's the answer I was looking for. Thanks.
Solomon?
No.
No, no comment?
No comment.
Okay. We'll go ahead and ask for any public comments. Is there any public comment in regards to this? Seeing none. Is there any on the phones? I got a flash from Gary. There's none on the phones. I'll bring it back to council. I'm willing to entertain a motion for the approval of the proposed action.
I'd like to make a motion.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Five eyes, motion carries. Okay, committee reports. I think there's only one committee that's met since the beginning of October. Is that correct?
So I think you're probably going to hear from us today, infrastructure.
20th was, because after 20th, I think we have infrastructure and quality of life, right? City Argus meeting tomorrow. So, yeah, it's just infrastructure. You want to go first?
Sure.
Okay.
So we end up, the discussion items were SCE, option E. And that is, was SCE getting back, if anybody's unaware, option E is, is replacing all the lights throughout town. There was also a heavy discussion on the Kelvin spectrum of light that's going to be put throughout town. Just so you guys are aware, we, we discussed it at the infrastructure meeting, we discussed it here one day. We had a member of the public that was deeply concerned and rightfully so. Turns out there was some lights put out on our tierials. There were a higher Kelvin spectrum. So what I'm talking about is that it's not just brightness as in wattage, but the actual spectrum of light. And if you look at it, it's like if you're standing at Home Depot and you're in front and you're on the, I don't mean to be patronizing, I hope this isn't patronizing, but, and you're standing, looking at all the lights, you'll see a, from warm to bright blue, right? That's your Kelvin spectrum in a nutshell. Hopefully, there's not an engineer out there cringing right now. But in a, just in a general area, that, that's your Kelvin spectrum. So we had a, a deep conversation, a long conversation about where those are going to be. Because you could have a certain wattage, but if your Kelvin spectrum's off, it's going to just continue to be annoying to the eye and just blare into people's windows. So we, when I say we, I mean the staff got with SCE. They verified that it's going to be at the 3,000 Kelvin spectrum and that's where we hoped it would be. So that's going to work out. And all those lights are going to get replaced, I think by, by the end of the year. They say it won't take long once it starts, but you, you remember exactly when, Solomon? I thought I wrote it down, but apparently I didn't. I don't know. I don't remember exactly when. Okay. We talked about a four-way stop, Argus and Balsam. That was my idea. I wanted there to be a four-way stop. Travis said, we can't do that due to the rules for flow of traffic. There's not enough of a flow there or like the specs for how flow should go. He, of course, is correct as far as the rules go. We then discussed, could, could we maybe put in flashing stop signs? The consensus on the committee was that flashing stop signs in, in an area like Balsam where people, you know, where it's a residential area would be deeply annoying, you know, if you're having it flash into your living room. So we had one committee member that disagreed, you wanted to at least do something. I said, if we can't have a four-way stop, then we'll just wait until we can. That didn't pass. We talked about ADA transition plan just briefly. Of course, we're on track with the California Department of Justice. Street lighting on downs, that is still being researched. Patch paving standards, that was a long conversation, was something that Mr. Reed's going to have, going back and doing some research on. We talked about bringing our standards to Caltrans standards. Lighting for Pearson Park was something everybody wanted to talk about, Solomon. I don't know if you wanted to say anything more other than.
No.
Everybody on the committee agreed that there's not enough lighting in certain portions of Pearson Park. Like if you, if you are where the, where the children primarily play on the equipment, so not the basketball court, but with the equipment, there's not enough lighting and everybody seems to agree, so. Nerissa, is there anything you wanted to say?
And she, Nerissa also agreed for that, so.
Yeah, I don't, I'm just talking about your, your stuff here. I don't know if you wanted to chime in.
She's waiting.
She's waiting for me to say something silly.
So I've actually been looking into estimates on solar lighting around the playground and I have obtained one. Now I just need to find a contractor that can build the footings and design them and then they can be installed. It seems like it's a pretty easy project. The one estimate I have right now is three light poles around the playground area and it's about 13,000 just for the light poles and the light fixtures. And they're all solar, so. And they're really nice because you can control the operating hours of them and you can also set like sensors to where they only shine at like 30% if no one's there, but if somebody walks under, they'll go up to 100%.
Wow.
So I am working on that immediately after Solomon brought it to my attention.
This may be one of the ARP projects that's brought to council during the, during the workshop.
Thank you.
And then a wastewater plant update. I think there was some discussion just about us getting out, I think, to, to visit. We, we are, we are all going to go out to visit. That was a.
As soon as we all get our background clearance.
That was, that was my fault. Sorry, guys. That's it. That's all I got.
Can I just ask a quick question between Kyle and Nerissa about the basketball courts and ARP? Just, is that the type of thing where we have to wait until we get to an ARP workshop and these final things or, I mean, I'm just, I'm, I'm posing a question that says, you know, $13,000, we know that we need the lighting, we know that there's a problem there. Can we just get it done and then, and then, okay, we did that, it came from ARP. I mean, I'm just asking.
So Nerissa's moving out, actually, I mean, this is a, is a positive comment. She's moving out quicker than I thought. I assumed that this would just go back and be part of the workshop. I'm glad that she's moving out and just making it happen.
Right. What we're working on, obviously, we have, we've been meeting with, with a number of the sports organizations within town to find out what their interests are, if there were some funding for capital improvement projects. So we've met with them. Probably the biggest issue we're having right now is just getting all of the conservative quotes, just to understand.
Yeah.
A number that we may have. Some of these things, we have funding that is capital projects unrestricted because of our COVID losses. We can take that number and spend it on capital projects. Other capital projects have to be in a qualified census zone. And so there's other areas that we can spend COVID ARP money in those areas. And so it's kind of a balancing act of where you can spend this money, under what conditions. That's been kind of the confusing part about the, you know, the interim final report and the FAQ. So that's what we've really been working on. So we're, we're getting really close to having all of our numbers and a lot of projects have been identified by staff. And really what we're hoping to do is, is bring to you projects that staff thinks is good and then is backed up by the people who are going to benefit from it and bring that to you guys. Obviously, we're just going to bring to you a suite of, these are, these are some of the projects we've looked at, here's the support that we've seen from them, this is the justification, how we can spend it, then obviously leave it open for, you know, whatever discussions and direction council wants to go.
I, I appreciate that. I guess what I, my, my, my vision is seeing is something like this is, let's assume that ARP didn't exist, right? This is a situation we would be dealing with, right? As a, as a, as a council in a normal functioning year, COVID, this, ARP, that. This is something that we would be, you know, fixing within a normal functioning year or placing within the next scheduled budget year, most likely under, under a necessity as, as, as needed. Is there going to be something in that workshop that rates them or kind of, you know, says, this is a five because we are going to have to do it either way? This isn't, this isn't so much a luxury as much as a necessity and I, and I don't know if there's something like that.
I think we're coming to you with, almost every project I think we're working on is a necessity to some degree. It's either a major repair project, like replacing the dividers.
Right.
In Kerr McGee that are, that are basically fall, they're antiquated and falling apart to, let's say, new lights at the football field. Because there's an issue with two light standards being in the middle of the field, they want them removed and we can put two new light standards in and increase the use of the field. So we're, we're really trying to get feedback from your constituents upfront to get where they sit at, what are their priorities? And so then when we come bring it to you, we hope that they will come to the meeting and express what they want and have involvement. So really, what we're looking to, if we're going to be spending money on, you know, one-time capital projects, we really want to make sure that those, the projects that we're doing from a staff level are something that the community really wants, that there's a benefit to our long-term, you know, maintenance of our, of our infrastructure. And so, yeah, we're really trying to put, I mean, we meet every Wednesday. I know the bulk of the work has fallen on Nerissa and then she's been using Travis quite a bit. And so we're, we're getting really close. I think we're just down to maybe one or two quotes that we need and then we'll be bringing it back to you. But we, we have, believe it or not, I think we are, as a city, are quite a bit ahead of most communities. Most communities are just waiting.
Yep.
To be able to get a little bit of information. I know Cherie has been reaching out to her finance groups in other cities, you know, they've put the, the Google watch on where you, you know, where any sort of ARP funding, you know, language, you know, that comes up on the Google, you know, they get a, you know, ping on it. So she's really working hard behind the scenes to try and identify all of the ways we can spend this money. So, and again, go back to the, that one project, we feel that, we know we're going to be to you here shortly. That is a low-hanging fruit project that we hope that we can even purchase it through with the purchasing power agreements. And so some of that should go a lot quicker.
So it'll come a fast, that's what I'm.
Right. What we're trying to avoid is, we're trying to avoid bringing everything to you piecemeal. And we're going to be hopefully coming back to you with one more request for ARP funds and that would be for race, to get that project moving. I do believe we have negotiated an agreement. I'm working with Martin on a few details that may or may not be problematic, that we're working through. So hopefully in the next week or so, we'll, we'll have that agreement squared away, then we can bring it to you guys during the next meeting. But after that, everything else, you know, these are all three bright line projects that we brought. So after that, everything else will come to you as, in, in the form of a workshop.
Okay. Thank you. Quality of life. You or me? I'm going to be excitable, so you want to.
You can start it now, follow the note table.
Okay. So we had a great quality of life meeting last night. Okay. So we had a great Quality of Life meeting last night. I think it went the longest we've ever went on a Quality of Life meeting as well. They couldn't get me to to shut up, to be brutally honest. And there was head slapping and freakouts and every bunch of, it was nothing but entertaining showmanship. Here's the gist. I was hitting myself for the record.
I was wondering where
Where was this? Where was the violence coming in? No, I did it. I did it to myself. The fact is that when we talk about Quality of Life, we're talking about where are the things that we can make improvements? Where are the opportunities? Where are the things that that we can do? So I'm going to make it very simple for the the audience and for the citizens that watch. SPP, still waiting, okay? The moment we hear, you hear, and we'll have a bottle of champagne waiting. If if it turns out great.
And you're referring to the pool.
I'm referring to the pool. Sorry, SPP is the pool. But the pool is over there right now because until we know with SPP, we can't take the next course or direction. We are at the mercy of hearing on that grant request and then deciding how we can steer. I assure the public, there's at least two other ideas that are that are circulating. There's a Plan B and a Plan C that's in conversations and how the funding could happen and how those things could happen. But none of those courses are ready to be brought out until SPP, because if SPP hits, we're going. I mean, we've already made that commitment. So taking that to the side, what would this community think about a whole nother level of parks substantially leveled improvement? And that's what the Clean California Grant Initiative is going to open the door to. And when I say a door, I'm I'm not meaning, hey, by the way, we get one shade structure every year from like CBBG. We're talking about doing multiple millions of dollars worth of improvements simultaneously, and potentially at the same time, we might be working on a pool at the same time. There's the opportunity for us to to lead off the game with three men on base, hit a homerun, put three more men on base and hit another homerun and start the game out with an eight-zero lead. And that's spectacular with the with the pitcher batting. That's awesome. And that's what I want to share in terms of excitement. Do I have all these great detailed news? No. Is there opportunity? Yes. And I've, we've directed the Parks and Rec Department to come back to council at the 20th with a larger display of what we're talking about and what it could mean to the city and what it could mean to this council and what are some of the steps that we're going to need to get there. Similar to SPP, we're going to need the support of the council to move forward with a grant writer and and some of those things. And we want to try and let you guys see what the vision is and what what's included in that. And we've directed her to bring that back to us on the 20th. And we hope to be able to really kind of show you guys even more so, some of the cool possibilities the Clean California Initiative looks to open the door to. And that would be a secondary win, you know, if if the first win also hits. The other big thing that we were talked about were the list of things that we're talking about in this initiative are directly from you, the constituents. Everything on this list are the things that you guys are talking to us about. How do we improve the skate park? How do we bring bathrooms? What do we do for the softball fields? How do we make it more kid-friendly and kid-friendly? There's, it's a wonderful wealth of opportunity, and that's what I wanted to excitingly share is, man, if we can get two of those in, I mean, we're talking about transforming a community that that we've, we just used the word, and we use the right word, unfortunately, which is neglect. And it's time, and and I think we've got a great opportunity here in front of us. When you add in ARP on top of that, now you're top, you know, it's it's top of the first, and we're up twelve-nothing. So that's, that was the excitement perspective. I'll let Doc give the technical perspective.
And equally exciting tonight is, so the operation of the Kerr McGee Center are fully open. And so there are a lot of activities going on. The facility rentals are open. There's open gym, i.e. basketball. There's racquetball courts are open. Pickleball is open with reservations preferred. Open volleyball. Gazebo, it's skate park. Well, that's on the back burner until later, which we can maybe integrate into another area of, I don't know what you want to call it, ideas that we were, that Mayor Brunet just touched base on, so maybe it'll fall into that, but we'll see. What else we got? We have the tree lighting, which is usually the first weekend in December, and that's going to hold true, I mean, at this point. So we'll follow up with an exact date and time on that. Second movie night, second movie night will be on October 29th at seven. The previous movie night that they just had was a successful night. There was fifty to seventy-five participant or, you know, people that showed up for it. Let's see, what else? I think you covered the pool and anything else Nerissa we'd like to add on there? I think we kind of covered most of it, but it was. It was a very exciting meeting. It was one of our longest ones, and it was good. And there is a lot of excitement, and it would be fantastic for the community if we are able to pull this off. So that's all I have to add.
That movie night is what I was saying that I I got, come on up, Nerissa. Yeah, I was just, right before I showed up here, I got a text that they were going to have food vendors there, which is this time, yeah, Vin and Taco, Taco Truck.
We're also going to have the ice cream truck there, and we've reached out to the Shaved Ice Shack to see if they'll be showing up. And possibly Parks and Rec may go out and sell some concessions too. I'm not really sure if that's, I'm still kind of deciding on that because if we're going to have the food trucks, we don't want to take away from that. So, and just a clarification, the movie will start at 6:00 PM.
Six PM, okay.
Yeah.
My bad.
You know what you might be able to do, Nerissa, if you want to try, is you might be able to find somebody who would work with the cinemas to provide popcorn.
So that is something that Alto One is talking about.
Okay. Well, there's, that would be the perfect person.
Yeah.
And thank you, Nerissa, for all of your hard work. You have been very, very busy.
Okay. No other committee reports? We'll go ahead and move on to, I'm sorry, is there any other questions for Quality of Life? Nope. Okay, moving on to other committees, boards, or commissions? Anybody have any reports? I know, I'm just looking around. The only one I have is that Quad States met on September 24th and approved a contract for a new executive director. They continue to work actively on a lot of the environmental challenges. They're carefully watching Build Back Better and and what its expectations are going to have. I would say, you know, there's a very diligent and legislative advocacy side to Quad States that's continuing to work on our behalf, and and obviously, it's it's member communities. The only other one I wanted to just mention is I wanted to thank the IWV TV Booster Group for coming in, and they met with me on the 22nd, and it was really a great opportunity to get a sense of where the history is of the booster is, and those people that don't know how much work went into it way, way, way back when, to bring television. I said, I said, you are the guys that finally made the honeymooners appear on the base. And they said, that's, that's exactly what we did. And, you know, there's, there's a need to maintain that free option, you know, and and RACE is going to do a lot to provide, you know, better fiber options and things like, there's all these possibilities, but the the direct television thing is something that needs to continue to be looked at, and we've asked for some things to be looked at. And I just wanted to thank them for coming in and sharing with me some of their concerns.
I had Kern Cog right after, right after the council meeting, the day after. So it was Wednesday. I had it was on Thursday, and we got a, there wasn't a lot out of there, other than we, we had some grants to make sure we get through. We, we did that. That is probably pretty boring to most people, but the consensus, not consensus, the census came out finally, which has an impact towards the redistricting board. We didn't, right, we didn't discuss that too much. We just discussed, I have all the, I was just finding the handout, just all the numbers for the census, but wasn't
Did we get the RSTP grant?
We did. We did. Yeah, that, thanks for bringing that up. Yes, that was a We got the grant.
It's phase two of Ward. It's from Norma to Downs.
Right. There was just some, there was some confusion on deadlines, and then there was some further convoluted things that happened. And so it took Travis and I pleading our case on why we needed to make sure that this grant went through, and I believe that was, that was sufficient. That's all I have for Kern Cog.
Wow. Travis, Kyle, thank you.
Oh, yeah. Well, thank Travis. He, he made a good presentation.
Okay. Any other, none? City Manager report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just one item. As you're well aware, there was a potential issue that arose last week regarding our Richcrest Court. I included you guys on all the emails that that went back and forth. If you didn't already know, a couple of years ago, we were noticed by the Judicial Committee of California that our local Richcrest Court was in line for new facility. The facility's old, antiquated, and they were, we were on the list of one of the, one of the communities that needed an immediate new court. July of this year, the Judicial Committee approved their five-year plan with both the City of Richcrest and Mojave on the list. That's still a priority with Richcrest funding scheduled for FY23, which is next year. Obviously, this is a very important thing for our community, for us to have a local court. However, the topic came up that there was a consideration with our local Kern Superior Court of closing the Richcrest and Mojave Courts and consolidating that funding and building a regional court in Tehachapi. So several levels that is not good for our community. One, it puts our justice system seventy miles away in Tehachapi, which means that everybody that has to appear in court for jury duty or child custody or divorce or criminal would have to find a way to Bakersfield. It'd have a significant impact on our workforce, specifically public safety, because right now, we do spend a lot of time on the road with prisoner transports. We do spend time in Bakersfield and Superior Court for felony trials, but this would have brought all of our officers on their preliminary hearings and traffic court to Tehachapi. Now, right now, if they're in Richcrest and we have a significant life-threatening incident, they can leave the court, respond. And so at least we have officers within the valley. This would have had a big impact. Would have had a big impact on our our working poor who have difficulties getting to and from places and trying to get them folks to Tehachapi would have been fairly significant. So this was a big issue. So we emailed back and forth with the courts, basically, you know, explaining the city's position of why it would not be a good idea to to consolidate Tehachapi. And it did work. We did have, you know, very good dialogue with the courts explaining that. And then I got an email this evening, basically stating they're going to support the the new facility in Richcrest, and they realize that what an impact that would be to our community. So it was good for us to at least get our input. I was preparing for a little bit more community input because this would be a a significant issue within our community, far greater than the impact we had when our jail closed. I mean, this would be a game changer. I don't know very many communities that that have to, that have approximately population of forty thousand people that have to, you know, drive seventy miles for court. It had been, would have been a big impact. So fortunately, the courts took a different look at it, saw what the impact would be, and it appears that, you know, we're still on track, hopefully, for our new court in 2022, 23. So that's where we're at.
Fantastic job. Nothing else to say other than that was Ron taking strong, immediate action on behalf of our community. Guys, can't tell you, can't say it loud enough, guys. That's what advocacy and relationships and
No, that that was huge. The impact to our community would have been enormous. Luckily, you were paying attention, Ron. You caught it. You jumped all over it, sort of contacting all the right people because that would have just devastated us. That would have been huge.
Fantastic job. Anything, nothing else? Future agenda items? Any with future agenda items? I know we we talked about one, you know, before the meeting started, and and I'll go ahead and throw it out there because it was Peggy's idea, but she wanted me to say the words, and that was, and Kyle threw in maybe doing the combination of seal and logo.
Yeah, let's not listen to me too much.
Hey, we're, we're, we're all involved. Just that, you know, at some point, should we be looking at a change in our modernization of our city's logo? And maybe retaining our seal for official documents and for those types of things, but actually, how we use the logo for marketing, social media, all those types of things. And and I know that that we're using a much more modern look on the social media side, but maybe finalizing that to more of an actual logo change for the city. That was one future agenda item. The other one I'm going to go and throw out there from from mine is, you know, I commend incredibly City Manager Strand for being on top of this this core issue. But it brings to light something I talked about way back when, and I'm just going to bring it forward for a future agenda item, and that is a discussion about potentially looking at a name change of East Flores between Channel Lake Boulevard and French. And and I have two reasons specifically I'm looking at that, which is, first, that's the only portion of East Lost Flores. So you're not talking about making one portion East Lost Flores and having another portion that continues on somewhere else that's still Lost Flores. We're talking about a very specific segment of road. And the second is that with the new construction, it would certainly be awesome to be be able to make that our Kern County civic area. And if we had a civic drive that encompassed our museums, our courts, our superintendent offices, everything, a fire department, a public library, all of that that makes a centralized civic area within the community, then you stack that on top of RECVB, and you stack it on top of making it a bus stop with the Welcome Center, or you stack it on top of making it a central point of entry for multiple different needs, like you said, the working poor, where we can create opportunities for transportation or transit or all those types of things. And so I just want to know, you know, hey, what does it take to this? Is it crazy and it's going to cost us a hundred thousand dollars and this is the stupidest thing in the whole wide world? Or does this simply take a good action on our behalf? You know, I don't know. Future agenda item request is bring it back and teach me whether this is even a possibility. Any other future agenda items?
Could we vet that through one of the community committees first?
Sure, we can vet it through City Org.
I was hoping for infrastructure to go to Travis instead of me. Yeah, well, that's, we can bring it to infrastructure if you want to. No, we can bring it to City Org.
He knows why I said City Org.
We all do.
Yes, I know. I mean, I mean, again, if you want to vet it through infrastructure, that's fine.
No, no, City Org's fine. I was just messing around.
I mean, again, I'm just saying that just, and I just want to really, I don't know if it costs anything or if it costs nothing. If it takes a whole bunch of engineering studies, I mean, it takes every, it takes an engineering study to put a stop sign in that that costs twenty thousand dollars. So I don't know what it's going to take, and that's what I wanted to find out.
Like, we can figure that out.
That's, there's the question. Any other future agenda items? Neither you gentlemen?
No.
Mayor Council comments? We'll go left to right. Kyle, you're first up tonight.
Nothing.
Nothing.
Just want to thank Sheri Fries for working on the ARP funding. So she has done a great job. Whenever I call, she immediately provided me the information on anything. So, and then want to thank Kerry for being here and answering questions. Great job, Kerry. Thank you. Want to thank Captain for answering our questions. Really appreciate that. Nerissa for being here, jumping on things all the time whenever we have some issues. Thank you.
So I just want to bring up, so I have a concern in regards to the COVID pandemic. And so just this week, I've had seven individuals contact me and either in person, well, actually, all of these were in person. But in regards to the mandates that have been coming down from on the federal level and how it's affecting their lives and their and their jobs, these individuals are looking at either losing their jobs or leaving their jobs because of the mandate. These are very productive individuals in our community, from, you know, professional engineering-type backgrounds to technical, you know, trade-type type work. It was a little bit overwhelming when I first started listening to these individuals. And so my concern is that, is this type of effect has, you know, takes place in in the workplace, how is that going to affect the community? How's it going to affect, you know, the 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 jobs, the employers? Is it going to be a negative effect on the community? There was two businesses that contacted me and were, their discussion with me was more in line with the effects it's already having on 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 them trying to keep the employees that they have, but still having to follow these mandates that are coming down. These individuals are, their their concerns are, I think, are very, very viable. It ranges from testing procedures to, you know, the the risks of vaccine versus risks of, you know, contracting contracting COVID and having viable antibodies. And if you've had it, and you, the research has proven that there's, that people do have viable, durable, and robust antibodies, and why aren't those people being equally brought into the playing field on assessment of how do we make decisions on keeping them in the workforce or not making major changes in their lives? It's affecting these people greatly. It's disheartening to see them moving from a community that they have given their lives to and committed to. You know, I can go on, you know, there's information out, you know, there was some information put into paper about, you know, that there's no deaths, no reactions to the vaccine. I went back through, I've read, you know, the data, the CDC, July of last year, there was 12,000 deaths through the fairs. I think it was July 20th, CDC edited their numbers to 6,000, and then within a day, back to 6,200. They state that there's no established causal relationship between the vaccine and deaths. And to me, that's pretty, if you read that, it's a statement that says, "We've established." It's not saying there is no definite, you know, causal relationship to the vaccine and any kind of reactions. So you can interpret it as you want, but it's pretty straightforward, you know, to myself in that same, and these are fact-checked. You can go online, you can research this stuff yourself. I do, I do it on my, you know, pretty regularly, probably daily. And so with that, the, let's see, oh, back to the, you know, there's, they've got the numbers. I believe it was 600. Don't quote me exactly on these numbers, because I'm kind of moving along here pretty quick. But with reactions to myocarditis and effects on youngers, they are admitting that that is indeed an issue. Some of the other stuff that was brought up was, you know, I think one of the vaccine companies here recent stated that their vaccine second injection was 98% efficacy, but then within four months or so was dropping down to 48 or 50%, depending on the numbers that you read. And so that brings concern to people. You know, you get the, you know, the vaccine, and, you know, the efficacy of it, is it, is it good? There is no long-term studies on the vaccine to know what people are going to be looking at down the road. And now we bring the schools into it, and so now they're wanting to inject the, you know, the children with these vaccines, again, with no long-term studies. And so these are all, I think, really concernable issues that we need to be thinking about as a community, and how it's going to affect us, and how it's going to affect us. For every action, there's a reaction. And, you know, from a national standpoint, is it going to affect the economy, and is that going to in turn, you know, affect us? Anyway, I know I've covered quite a bit in a short period of time. I didn't want to elaborate too, too long on it. But anyway, so I don't know if anyone else has been thinking along these lines or been talking with other individuals in the, in the community and had the same contacts that I've had. Was I unique that I had that many people come talk to me this week? I was a little bit overwhelmed with it, honestly. I wasn't expecting it. And anyway, so that's it.
What are you asking for, Scott? Because I'm not sure.
This is public comment.
Okay, so you're just making, you're not asking us.
No, I'm not, I'm just, this is...
I just was trying to understand.
Yeah.
You're using your council announcement section, but to pose a question back to the board and the community.
Yeah, so I don't know if it's something that, you know, we might want to, you know, discuss in the, in the future, but I think, you know, who's this as a council to be looking at this, this issue that's coming up? Or it's here. I mean, we're just, it's building.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'll go back. I actually had a note. I meant to mention something along these lines. I'm so glad that you brought it up, because I actually have not, maybe not had as many people as you have. But deep into the conversation, this conversation, I think the whole community is, especially with our major, you know, our biggest employer, and how hard this is impacting. I can't discuss that specifically. But something that somebody asked me to put out to the community was whether or not I am vaccinated. That was a question. Look, as a, as a council member, I think that you should put that out. And so I have no problem putting that out. That doesn't bother me. And so this is going to lead into the rest of the, I had a note to discuss this a bit, so I am glad you brought it up. I personally am vaccinated. I did my own research, and I did as much as I could and decided that it was safe for me personally. What that brings up is the rest of the conversation that I think we had, when there was a big group here and people were having the conversation, how did we feel about it? I thought that we expressed it, but we were trying to be pretty mild and even-tempered, so we didn't keep people flared up and angry. But that's, I think it's a choice. I think that we get, there's two different conversations going on right now, and the public should be paying attention, and it should bother people, that we've went beyond a science and math conversation to reverging on a civil rights conversation. And I think that's what you were touching on. I am, if anybody asks me, I don't care who they are, if they ask me what I think about the vaccine, like, well, I've looked at the adverse reactions. I think it's something in one in four million or one in a million. Yes, there are issues. Usually, it's within a certain, so many weeks. I am not a doctor. Like, I am not a virologist. I am not an immunologist. I'm not going to speak here from an official capacity and give people direction. I'll say, "Talk to your doctor." That's what I would have said to anybody. It's, I've talked to a few, as many medical professionals as I can within my sphere. I've done as much research as I possibly can, and I continue to do so. I didn't get research a couple of months ago, or a couple of years ago, or, you know, like a year ago, and stick with it. I'm listening to, I'm listening to as many podcasts, like scientific podcasts I can, on a weekly basis to make sure I'm up on it. And so I want the community to know, yeah, that's where I personally stand. However, I do believe that what we've seen is a massive overreach on a federal and a state level. And I mean massive. This is like a frog in a boiling pot scenario in my mind. This is not pretty where we're sitting, and I think it's dangerous. And you ask how it's going to affect the community. I think time will tell. We'll see how the community reacts. But it's something that I hope people are looking at. And if, no matter what side of this conversation you're on, you can be a very pro-vaccine person, or a very skeptical of the COVID-19 vaccine. Whatever that side you're on, those two things don't necessarily have anything to do with the civil rights portion of this. The actual, the mandates of something that's not had long-term studies, especially of children. I have had enough stuff pumping in my blood that I'm pretty sure it glows neon green in the night. So I'm not as concerned about myself, right? That doesn't worry me. But I do have a daughter, a six-year-old daughter, that I might like to see some more data on. And when we've seen as much backpedaling and changing, even in, this is not conspiracy theory, when we've seen the amount of information get switched around in the public light, in the major news networks from, you know, at a federal level, I think that's, that's enough to make people question motives. And that's where we start to get, I think people start to get concerned. All that being said, I wanted the public to make sure to know, they knew where I stood, since somebody asked me the question privately and asked me to put it out publicly. Yes, I decided that for my own personal self, I should get vaccinated. I made that decision. I did it pretty early on. But I think everybody else should consult their medical professional, somebody they trust, do their own research, and move out from there.
I'd like to add to that, because of the individuals that I spoke with this week, not one questioned the validity of someone making a decision to get the vaccine. That did not come up in one of their conversations. And I thought that was pretty instrumental, because that isn't the issue of, you know, and it shouldn't be the issue of, you know, should, you know, if a person chooses to get a vaccine based on medical and hopefully, you know, the best decision process that they can make, that's a, that's a decision that they can make. And I think their concern is that vice versa, they have that right to make that decision based on the facts and the data that's out there to make their own decision if they, if they don't want to. And so, and I think that was, you know, there's, the divide is, of course, is out there, but it was interesting that these, it wasn't a stand on my ground, you know, "This is what we should be doing." No, they were saying that this is my right, you know, and I should be, and it shouldn't affect my family like that. My concern is like, you know, in California, I looked up stats again today to fact-check it, you know, because the governor had made a comment that California had the lowest, you know, some of the lowest rates, you know, going in of the states. So I looked it up, and sure enough, it, you know, that fact-check's true, you know, if you can believe the fact-checkers. I mean, that's the problem with data nowadays, but, you know, you take what you got and try to make, you know, glean the most objective data to make the decisions on. So if that's the case, and we are, we are at this lowest point, and we're, things are moving in the right direction, then why are we taking these extreme measures now in some of these areas? Whether it's the mandate or taking the vaccines to the kids in these certain areas? So I think there's some real, you know, vital concern that people have as a society out there. So anyway, it's important. I think we need, you know, to stay, you know, abreast of it. And I personally think we need to support people on both sides of it, and, you know, try to keep it a, you know, a very equal playing field. So that's my comments for tonight.
So everybody get comfortable. If you need to stand up and stretch, go ahead. So let's just put a bell on the vaccine conversation. Let me first say thank you to my wife for making the choice to get the vaccine, and also to some incredible people at the VA who just happened to help me during the VA stand-down. And thank you to them. I showed no hesitation in being happy that my wife made that choice and made that decision, but she made it on her own. Not from my pressure, from other things. She had to research and make the decision. I think that's really what's important, is everyone has a right to their decision here. We all also have, and Kyle put it excellent, this is a civil rights issue more in terms of how the mandates are being applied to your employment, being applied to your way of life, that you're not being given those certain inalienable freedoms to make those choices on your own. That's absolutely correct. And literally, you know, because sometimes you can be walking around Walmart, shopping with your kids, and have pictures taken of you without a mask, and it's somehow that you're doing one thing instead of the other. It's not that, that's not the case. I'm actively living my private life and happy to. And my public position is exactly where Scott's is, and where Kyle's is, and where I think most of this council is, that, you know, we don't have a lot of control over the mandates, and, but we strongly agree with your right to have individual choice. And, you know, there's plenty of attorneys out there that probably would love to talk to you about anything that happens between you and your employer, and you have a right to go talk to them and knock yourself out. I've stated publicly that my position remains, especially like on September 9th, we came out of that East Kern Economic Alliance meeting, and that was when President Biden announced the 100-employee rule that still has yet to ever appear and/or is still weeks away from ever becoming a reality. If that happens, then this council will have some decisions to make, because we have over 100 employees. Until that day happens, I'm not going to respond to it, because it's not, it's not law. It's not actionable. And I'm encouraged, the same way you are, that the numbers have, you know, we had a, you know, yeah, okay, a variant came along, it did this in the curve, and then it dropped back down, and it has been. The seven-day average is down over 62%, I believe, from, you know, whatever it was one month earlier. And I'm not trying to talk down on disease. If you, if you're concerned about, if you have health amenities, or health, pre-existing conditions, any one of those, please, be safe, be smart, do anything, but respect that both sides of it. And I think that's what our message has been. I think that's what we all agree. And thank you for bringing that up. So now to the fun stuff, the good stuff. I wanted to talk about communication. We got into a mission at the beginning of this year about communication, and we have a company that we're working with called ZenCity. And I just wanted to kind of put it out there that, you know, this is just September. This is September 1 to September 30. We saw a 30% increase in the volume of conversations and more than 15,000 interactions with the community over a one-month period. And I can go back, and I can say unequivocally that the posts about the street work, the posts about meetings, about, is it Francine? Francis. I mean, what an incredible, just those are the stories that make up the heart of this community. And thank you to the staff for buying into this council's vision of communication and getting it out there. I promise you, it is paying off, and it's paying off in little itty-bitty ways that are, will have big ripples over time. There are small drops that have big impacts, because we are communicating, and we're communicating professionally and consistently. And, you know, I, Mr. Wicknick left. I want to be able to be very clear that there is no blocks on any of my communication. I showed that to the doctor right when it happened. I will personally drive to his business tomorrow and put it in front of him, make sure that he can see every single thing I'm saying or doing, and as well as any other member of the public. I believe in that transparency. In fact, I've ran my businesses for 17 years on that basis. We have to do that, and we're doing a better job of it. And I commend our council, our staff, our management. We're getting there. And then finally, just a reminder to the whole community, guys, hey, masks, vax, mandate, COVID, Christmas time, money, we can find a lot of things to be depressed about. We can walk around here with our heads down, being depressed every single day. But it's a choice. And right now, this city is primed to have some incredible opportunities. We have one grant in the hopper waiting to hear. We've got another one getting ready to go. We're talking about making improvements. We've replaced 100% of the patrol vehicles for our police force in a year's time. We've gotten salary increases for all of our, not salary, but benefit and changes that improve the salary position of all of our city staff. We have been busting. And I do not want to see us spend hours fighting over masks and vax and COVID and every other damn thing that we've been fighting about for 18 months over that side, because guess what, community, we're getting some incredible things done, and there's some great opportunities looking for this community in 2022, 2023, 2024, and all the way up to 2025, when we got a new wastewater. But there's a project every single year getting queued up that's going to make this community better. And that's a lot to be excited about. So when you're feeling that, when you're feeling that pressure, when you're feeling that mask, vax, any one of those, just remind yourself, we're working hard for our community, and we're very excited about the future of Ridgecrest. With that, I will say good evening, and we will adjourn the meeting at 9:07 PM. Everyone have a fantastic evening, and see you in two weeks.